Okay, good evening, City Council, members of the public. As a reminder, we are picking up the meeting from Monday night, as was continued. As a result, we'll be picking up at the deliberation stage of the discussion. With that said, well, we had two rounds of public comment on Monday night. Public comment has been closed. With that said, if the majority of council wishes, we can reopen public comment. With that, I will turn it over to council for their consideration.
If I may go ahead and read into the record that when public, just that the conference ID is 87627479487 to join on Zoom and pass code 259210. Thank you.
It's great to see so many people here tonight, and I fully support reopening public comment. I understand that there were some delays in getting the written public comments up online for the benefit of the public to read in advance of the meeting. That delay, I think, additionally warrants reopening and hearing from folks who might have already spoken or have something new to say. So I do support hearing from everyone and having a full and open process.
Well, maybe we won't have to get to that. You know, I would like to just start and say that, you know, now that we've taken a moment to continue this item, getting a chance to rest, breathe, and perhaps reflect a bit. I'm hoping that we can come together tonight and complete this item. We've heard a tremendous amount of public response to Monday night's meeting, including from a number of elected officials, public responses from our Congress member-elect. I understand our state senator, our supervisor, county supervisor-elect, a number of organizations such as the County Democratic Party, the County API Caucus, and more. In addition to a number of dozens, scores of more public comments that have come in via letters and email and so forth, a significant majority of which have asked this council to follow the city charter's process and select a mayor and deputy mayor in its first meeting, which has been continued to tonight. So, you know, this is what the city charter expected. It's what the city attorney has recommended. It's what the council guidelines suggest. It's what our city manager has recommended. And so, in an interest, in the hope that we can, in fact, do that in a way that values the time of those on this dais staff and those in the room, I'd like to make a motion simply to nominate Amaranth Lee for mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Patrice, will you please call the vote?
Councilmember Lorraine.
Yes.
Councilmember Lee.
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash.
No.
Councilmember Newsom.
No.
Motion fails, 2-2.
Are you finished with your remarks? Okay. I would love to, just number one, welcome everybody who came out tonight, who was here on Monday, to everyone who's on Zoom, wherever you are. Thank you for being here. I'd also like to acknowledge that our council meeting on Monday night was long. It was difficult. It was messy at some times. And I want to thank my fellow council members for their engaged and respectful conversation. That is important no matter what we do. I want to thank everyone who gave public comment once or twice on Monday and say that's so important to the process. And it's a small D democratic process. We have to have as many people engaged, as many opinions as possible. And that's why we're all here and we're involved. And I think that's a very good thing. I'd also like to extend a big, big thanks to all of our city staff who are here, all the city staff who helped us prepare for these meetings. We all chose to be here. The city staff is here being professional, being supportive, and we could not do this without you. So, thank you very much. And I, for one, am going to try my best to fulfill the goals of the evening and make sure that we come up with a conclusion, whatever that conclusion might be, so that we're not here at 2:45 in the morning. I'm hoping that we can focus on what we have in common rather than positions, because if we start from a place of commonality, maybe we can go forward a little bit. And I wrote down a couple of basic principles that I hope we all can agree on. They're very, very high level. Number one, we all want to fill the open council seat in a fair way with the most qualified applicant. Number two, we all want to avoid any perception of undue influence in the selection of the fifth council member. Number three, we want to ensure that there is a duly selected mayor and deputy mayor to carry out all the responsibilities outlined in our city charter. I think that's a lot to agree on, and I hope we can build on that going forward. So, thank you.
I have little to add that we have not already said in the long meeting that we had on Monday. But I do want to echo my thanks to the staff for sticking with us. And I'd like to thank everyone for sticking with us in the audience. And I know people also went home and continued watching into the wee hours of the morning. So, thank you. I hope that if we're deadlocked again, that we can adjourn and reconvene after we've appointed the fifth council member on Monday. I don't believe that we're in any disagreement on the fact that, sorry, what I meant to say is, I don't believe that what we're disagreeing on is undemocratic to the process. I think, in modern times, San Mateo City has never appointed a mayor and deputy without a full regime of five council members sitting on the dais. I'm also on record as saying that I will support AMO being the mayor. My sole concern is that there's only four elected council members. I want us to have equal standing and an equal say in who fills the fifth council seat. And I think that that is the most democratic way. There's no conspiracy or evil agenda on my part. I'm solely wanting to make sure that we keep this process as democratic and fair as possible. Thank you.
I'm interested to hear from the public. Can, do we have a majority of council that would like to reopen public comment?
I am open to it.
You don't need a motion.
I also support opening public comment.
And that we all agree.
Okay, for the record, I wanted to mention we convened it, or closed at 3:00 a.m. on Monday. And since then, we've received public comment, as is our usual protocol. We compile them at 4:00 p.m. the day of the meeting, and they were released to the public at 5:08 p.m. So, there wasn't really a delay. It was just our standard process. And having a meeting come up so quickly after another meeting is unusual, too. So, how we're going to manage this process is we're going to take a short break for about five minutes. You can come and get your, inside the room, your public speaker slips and fill them out. So, you have enough time, you don't have to rush. And then, we will convene again and begin the public's comment process. Does everybody clear? Okay, thank you. We are going to break now at 7:11 p.m. to allow for people to fill out the forms.
Thank you. Ready? Okay, we're ready to get going. Council, we have, we have 56 in-person speaker slips. And as of now, we have 17 people online, 22. Patrice, would you ask the online people to raise their hands if they'd like to speak, so we can get an accurate count?
If we could have the online participants, please raise your hand at this time so we can count how many attendees want to speak. We are holding steady at 36 with 105 attendees online.
Okay, so, that gives us 92 speakers. Is council amenable to one minute apiece? Okay, one minute apiece, Patrice.
Thank you. I will call the first three speakers. The first speaker is Claire Mack, and following her will be Kevin Simpson and then Charlotte Chang. If the next speakers could please line up against this wall so you can be ready to come efficiently to the lectern to speak. That really helps keep us moving. I appreciate that. So, the very first speaker is Claire Mack, and the timer is set at one minute.
Listen, I can't see number one. Cut! Good evening, everybody and council members. I would like to see this council slow your roll. Take some time. This is a bit of upheaval in our city at the moment. So, I'd like to see you wait until next Monday. Amaranth Lee, when you became selected to be part of this group, people came and held, had your back and listened while several people came before a full council for you to be selected. I'd like to see that same privilege handed off to other people. Something was said the other night, though, that bothered me. I don't think any neighborhood in this city deserves, then it deserves to have a council member represent their community, their section of San Mateo, better than anybody else does. There have been several communities in the city of San Mateo who have never had a mayor. And the ethnic...
I'm sorry, Claire, your time is up.
Actions of the ethnic representation on this council has been great in the last few years. And I hope it continues that way. Thank you.
Thank you, Claire. The next speaker is Kevin Simpson, followed by Charlotte Chang, and then Denise Terry.
Thank you, council members. My name is Kevin Simpson. I've spoken to you before. Since the last time I was actually in the chamber, I actually managed to get a haircut. So, some progress. I'm a 15-year resident of North Central. I'm a lifelong Democrat, a former union officer, a proud gay man, a renter priced out of this market. Tonight, I'm appealing not just to this council, but to my fellow citizens for what our greatest president, at the time of our worst travail, called the better angels of our nature. For my fellow citizen, I appeal to you that in this and in all the business that comes before our city, we stop the overheated rhetoric, the name-calling, and the nastiness. Stop characterizing motives about people you don't know. For the council, there's a compromise here. I'd like to see councilmember Lee made mayor. I'd like to see Member Nash and Member Newsom nominate and second her. I'd like her to pledge that she will not use her veto to seat a member of the candidates as the fifth member. And I think that's a great compromise, and I think it's something...
Thank you, sir.
...would restore some of the unity to the city. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Charlotte Chang, followed by Denise Terry, and then Jeff Lamont.
Hello, I'm Charlotte Chang. I'll be fast, because I have a three-year-old at home. Mr. Newsom, I've enjoyed being your friend and your neighbor and a fellow board of the Homeowners Association, but I respectfully disagree with both you and Ms. Nash on your decision. I understand the concern is about this tie-break that Ms. Lee might be able to endow. But in other governmental organizations, usually the tie-break goes to a person of seniority, which clearly is Ms. Lee. And her work over the last two years as a council member and the work I've witnessed, I think she has earned the right to make that tie-break. And I also think that the harm that this is causing over the concern of what this veto might cause is far outweighing what this time is taking, because it is causing dissension within the council in its first meeting. It's causing lack of faith, and it's also disrupting our city government. So, I'm asking you, both Lisa and Rob, take pause. Think about this. We want a united front for the holiday season. We want a united front for the rest of the year. And we all agree that we trust in this Lee's decision-making. So, why are we spending all of this time on a technicality? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is Denise Terry, followed by Jeff Lamont, and then Michelle Hudson.
Congratulations to the new council members. I invite all of you here today to bring your high selves to this proceeding, to not put off to tomorrow what can be done today, because tomorrow is not promised to anybody. You have a decision to make. You've all said that you would elect Mayor Lee, to be back Mayor Lee, in her position as the next mayor. Why wait? I think, in respect to your fifth council member, whoever that may be, show her or him this is going to be a great place to work, that you're going to be wonderful colleagues to harmonize next to and make decisions with in a collaborative working environment where you can get along despite your differences. Show that person that they should want to sit next to you and be part of this team. There's really no reason to put it off. Just show them that this is a good place to work and make that decision today so that you can get along with business, get on with the business of serving the city that you all so love dearly, that is looking to you for leadership. Show your children that you are acting as leaders that they should want to be when they're in your position. Please, do the right thing, not the political thing. We trust you. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Jeff Lamont, followed by Michelle Hudson, and then Mia Clappam.
Good evening, council members. Hopefully, we won't be here until 2:30 this morning, like on Monday night. So, I am a property owner here in San Mateo. I've lived on the peninsula almost all of my life. So, I want to echo what Lisa had actually mentioned. I think we owe it to whoever the fifth council member is going to be on this dais to have that vote. You know, the vote should be based on five council members, not four. And the other thing that occurs to me is that if we end up in a deadlock and we have seat of the mayor, the mayor has, as has been mentioned, has veto power, so to speak. So, in a sense, the mayor will have two votes. And I think that's not democratic. It should be one vote for each council member. So, I have suggested at the meeting we had on Monday that we wait until we have a fully seated dais of five council members before we vote on mayor and deputy mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michelle Hudson, followed by Mia Clappam, and then Justin Alley.
Thank you. My name is Michelle Hudson. I'm a longtime resident of San Mateo District 1. I am here to present a petition by a coalition of Democratic leaders, organizations, and community members, which was just circulated a few hours ago and already has almost 400 signatures. This is an excerpt. "We, the undersigned, defend the Charter of San Mateo. The San Mateo Charter and city guidelines are clear. The first order of business for a reorganizing council is to elect the most senior council member as mayor. Overriding this process is a breach of protocol and 128 years of precedent. We support Amaranth Lee's rightful place as mayor. We insist on the peaceful transfer of power now. We call on all San Mateo council members to uphold the charter they were elected and swore an oath to defend. The city council must prioritize the peaceful transfer of power before all other business and elect its mayor and deputy now." Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the next speaker is Mia Clappam, followed by Justin Alley, and then Susan Blockstein.
Hi, everyone. My name is Mia Clappam. I was a longtime resident of San Mateo, but unfortunately, I couldn't buy a home here, so I had to move to a neighboring town. But San Mateo is very close to my heart, and it's an important place. I want to thank councilmember Lee for your commitment to good governance and professionalism. And I should hope that your colleagues on the dais will do the right thing and be on the right side of history and appoint you as mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Justin Alley, followed by Susan Blockstein, and then Noelia Corzo.
Hello, council, staff, and public. As a lifelong resident of San Mateo and someone who has been actively engaged in its civic life from the time I was in high school, I have never borne witness to a more flagrant disregard for the basic covenants of our community than that perpetrated Monday, December 5th, a date that will forever go down in infamy in the history of San Mateo. I am speaking, of course, of the willful abrogation of the unambiguously established norms for the orderly transition of mayoral power. The responsibility for the innumerable harms stemming from this abuse rests entirely upon councilmembers Nash and Newsom, who took it upon themselves alone to upend the holy standard and generally ceremonial process. Simply put, there is but one course of action for remedying and perhaps ultimately healing the ongoing damage that has been inflicted upon our community. Firstly, councilmembers Nash and Newsom must vote without further delay to allow councilmember Lee to assume the mayorship. Secondly, councilmembers Nash and Newsom must sincerely apologize to the people of San Mateo for the grand offense which they have committed against our city.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Susan Blockstein, followed by Noelia Corzo, and then Suzanne Bonilla.
Hi, my name is Sue Blockstein. I'm a resident of San Mateo District 1. I don't have a prepared speech, but I'm here to urge all members of council to immediately select councilmember Lee as mayor, and let's not drag this on all night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Noelia Corzo.
Good evening, council members.
Good evening, council members. I wanted to say that when I heard rumors that something like this was going to happen, I did not want to believe that it was true. I didn't. I thought better of every single person on this dais. And I am pleading with you to please do not further embarrass our city. Think about all of the implications that are to come as this continues to drag on and as our city continues to be in the headlines and recognize that this will not go away. You have heard from folks in higher office that are attempting to give you guidance, and I hope that you will listen to them. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Suzanne Bonilla, followed by Owen Day, and then Phoebe Shin Venkat.
Good evening. My name is Suzanne Bonilla. Every day that the city of San Mateo does not have a mayor causes more work and turmoil for city staff. The city manager Drew Corbett is not an elected official, and he cannot and should not fill the role of mayor. There are numerous things that the mayor does. The newly elected council members and most of the public have absolutely no idea of how much work goes on beyond, behind the scenes. City government does not function well without an elected leader. Staying in limbo is dangerous and an unreasonable precedent. Staying with past practice is good governance that everyone is able to appreciate and expect. Poll results show that the majority of San Mateans feel that San Mateo has good governance and that the city is heading in the right direction. Please do your job so that the people of San Mateo can continue to feel that way. Immediately elect Amaranth Lee for mayor.
Thank you. Owen Day is the next speaker, followed by Phoebe Shin Venkat, and then Pam Riddlemeier.
Good evening. My name is Owen Day, and I'm a freshman in high school from City Council District One. I've lived in San Mateo my whole life, and though I was away for much of the time in which the city council races took place this cycle, I spent as much time possible when I was home volunteering for councilmember Nash. Much of this work was based on my trust that she would do what was best for San Mateo and our District One community. So when I found out that she and councilmember Newsom stalled Monday night's meeting, I was, suffice to say, disappointed. I was saddened by this disrespectful, divisive, and disheartening attempted violation of our city's charter and 128 years' worth of precedence. We have a baseline expectation of our elected officials to uphold the rules that govern our society, and for two newly elected council members to begin their tenure by advocating for a breach of those rules is profoundly concerning. Councilmember Lee, as the most senior member of city council, despite any concerns about the tie breaking vote, should be confirmed as mayor immediately, as is directed by our city's charter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Phoebe Shin Venkat, followed by Pam Riddlemeier, and then Lisa Tanner.
Hello, San Mateo council members. This should be a time of celebration and community building. Instead, the swearing in of San Mateo's new council members and mayoral and vice mayoral appointments have been sullied by the vile antics at Monday's city council meeting, which still continues. I don't need to list councilmember Lee's qualifications. I won't summarize her numerous accomplishments and years of servant leadership. We all have Googled the last time I checked. I am vexed and frustrated by how councilmember Lee was treated in public and in front of her family to boot. The San Mateo City Council needs to follow protocol and appoint councilmember Lee to San Mateo mayor. Whether you're elected, appointed, or leader in any way, your responsibility is to bring our community members together. Don't be a wedge to drive us apart. The world and media do a great job of that already. Your job is to serve our communities, follow the democratic process, and model the behaviors we desperately need to see more of. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Pam Riddlemeier, followed by Lisa Tanner, and then Nathan Char.
Good evening, council members. I'm Pam Riddlemeier. I'm a resident of District One, and I've heard so many great people speak tonight already that I've taken their words out of my mouth. They've talked about divisiveness, how the actions that took place on Monday are creating more divisiveness in our community, and we've already suffered from so much throughout this election cycle. I don't know if you're aware of how much hostility, bullying, and other sorts of that have been going on for the past few months, but we've, we're hurting. The residents are hurting. So I could actually talk about faith. On Monday night, I heard councilmember Nash and Newsom, I heard you talk that, I heard you say that you have faith that you can come to consensus on a fifth member. Show us that you believe, that you trust your own faith. Show us that you have faith in your own beliefs, that you can come to consensus. And go ahead forward tonight and appoint councilmember Lee as mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lisa Tanner, followed by Nathan Char, and then Ken Abreu.
When something's really important, you just don't push forward, close your eyes, jump. You stop, you think. You don't think of just yourself, you think of everyone, especially when you are supposed to represent everyone. If you have a divided community, you don't take the side of one part of your community and think of yourself. So I appreciate the back and forth. It's interesting, all the misinformation that's been pushed out to the San Jose Mercury and then retweeted by a bunch of people. And it's interesting that someone found the need to tug on the coattails of our senator and congressman. Senator Becker said that Amaranth asked him to sign this petition to have her seated, and he wasn't planning on it. Why? Because we haven't said that we weren't going to seat her. It's interesting that we're asking for one week, and everyone's losing their minds over one week, and now we're already two days in. Wow, what's five more days going to cost us? Councilmember Lorraine said that he'd had a majority of emails asking to appoint the mayor. I sent in one email with 50 names.
Thank you.
Fifty names.
Come on, please, if we could have decorum in the council chamber, we're doing our best to keep the time up here. Thank you. If we could have Nathan Char next, then Ken Abreu, followed by Connie Weiss.
Hello, my name is Nathan Chan. I'm on the executive committee of the Sierra Club's Loma Prieta Chapter, which is the local chapter of the Sierra Club. And we attempted to submit a letter tonight, but it didn't make into the record, so I'm going to read from it today, right now. "On December 6, 2022, the executive committee of the Loma Prieta Chapter received a brief report regarding the San Mateo City Council dispute concerning the timing of its mayoral appointment for 2023. Although the committee did not have time for a full presentation of the issues and contention, a consensus position was reached that the public good is better served when proper process is followed by public agencies. It is our hope and expectation that the city will have the care to be an example for adherence to timely as well as good process. Thank you very much for this opportunity to speak. Thank you."
Thank you. Next speaker is Ken Abreu, followed by Connie Weiss, and then Dave Cohen.
This is going to be the first action of this city council. It's going to set the trend for how you go forward. It's essential, if you're going to function, that trust and respect come out of this process. Think back to the meeting that we had on Monday, where councilmembers Rodriguez, Bonilla, and Goffles all complimented each other, even though they disagreed because they were able to always work together in a positive way, even when they disagreed, and respect the rules. Now, councilmember Nash and councilmember Newsom, if you are not going to appoint councilmember Lee as mayor, you are disrespecting the process. You are disrespecting councilwoman Lee. You are disrespecting the city attorney and the city manager, who strongly recommended that you take the action to move this ahead. So I strongly recommend that you do that so we start out in the right direction. Otherwise, on Monday, you're probably going to have a two to two stalemate, no mayor, no fifth person, and a dysfunction that will spread throughout the city.
Thank you. Next speaker is Connie Weiss, followed by Dave Cohen, and then Jim Sell.
I don't think I could say it better than former mayor Mack or Lisa Tanner, that we need to slow our roll and do the right thing for all San Mateans. So I thank you, councilmember Nash and councilmember Newsom, for waiting until the fifth member is on board, and then everyone has an equal vote, and then you can decide who the mayor is. It does not violate the charter, it's the right thing to do, and it's only five days away. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dave Cohen, followed by Jim Sell, and then Alex Dersch.
Hi, Dave Cohen, resident of San Mateo. Again, part of the leadership of ethics San Mateo, but I'm speaking for myself tonight only. Former mayor Bonilla and I had a wonderful discussion before the meeting, and we disagreed about a few things, but we had a very polite, useful, productive conversation. I believe that we all, including myself, need to ramp down the mistruths, the rhetoric, the actualizations, the belief that nuclear disaster will happen without a mayor, because we have a competent city manager, governance here, that he and his departments will take care of things. All right, let's red, let's ramp down the rhetoric and the name calling, and I'm saying on all sides, including myself. And let's look at just one basic principle of one person, one vote. This is a unique situation where one person could have two votes. That's what this is all about. Period. Nothing more, nothing less. Tie break, a tie creating and tie
Thank you.
one person.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jim Sell, followed by Alex Dersch, and then Evan Adams.
Good evening, council. Thank you for the privilege to speak. I'm in District One, and I know, Lisa, you are in favor of affordable housing, and I saw in your brochures, you're in favor of affordable housing. It appears that in San Mateo, the question is of the speed and, and how fast that process goes. All the candidates knew when they put in their application to run for office that they about the charter and the procedures, and that in that call for the mayor having two votes to break ties. Everyone knew that Diane Pappan's spot would be open. She really didn't have anyone running against her. The problem that we have is that it was also known
I'm sorry, I missed your cell.
to win all three seats to control the council, and you only won two.
Thank you. Alex Dersch, followed by Evan Adams, and then Chris Eckert.
Good evening, council members. My name is Alex Dersch. Given national events of the last few years, we've seen the disastrous results of what happens when people put politics and power over service. And events today in Germany and Peru remind us that our democratic system of government relies on people respecting the laws and traditions that uphold it. Each one of you ran for office promising to uphold those democratic values and focus on getting results for your constituents. Obstructing the selection of a new mayor is shortsighted, prevents the council from moving on to focus on important issues facing San Mateans, inflouts the law and precedent that ensures each one of you will get to serve as mayor one day. I urge you to keep your promises and uphold San Mateo's democratic values by appointing councilmember Amaranth Lee, the only member elected with votes from the entire city as well as District Five, as mayor without delay. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Evan Adams, followed by Chris Eckert, and then Nicole Fernandez.
Hello, council. I would ask you to come to a decision on mayor tonight. The situation that you were faced with was well known by all of you during the election. All of you knew that we would have a new assembly member from San Mateo requiring an appointment last Monday, or next Monday. Elections have consequences. San Mateo's system is set up to ensure you are seated into office and then appoint a mayor. National political strategy need not enter city level politics. It was unacceptable to wait to appoint a Supreme Court justice until after a political event. It is unacceptable to wait to appoint a mayor until you engage in a political event. Holding the mayoral decision hostage until you get a fifth council member that you are happy with is not leadership. Stay here tonight, tomorrow morning, tomorrow afternoon, as long as it takes. Make a decision on this at this meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Eckert, followed by Nicole Fernandez, and then Chris Bressu.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I would like to say that you should stand firm in your convictions. If you feel, as I do, that it's not fair to choose the new mayor without the benefit of a full council, then stand your convictions. I would have more respect for you if you said, we can stay here as long as you want. I'm not changing what I believe is fair. And having said that, also be respectful to the citizens who are here who have jobs tomorrow morning, and please understand, nobody wants to stay here until 3 o'clock in the morning because some of us have to get up at 4, 5, 6 o'clock to go to work tomorrow, and you are, you are infringing upon our ability to do our jobs simply because of infighting. Stand firm in your convictions.
Thank you. Nicole Fernandez, followed by Chris Bressu, and then Ethan Mizzi.
Deja vu all over again. Thank you again all for serving on our council. I appreciate you making the time for us to give public comment again. I just want to say once again that not appointing somebody now is, or sorry, not making councilmember Lee is dividing and is a divisive action. We, San Mateo is making headlines for all of the wrong reasons. We are an embarrassment, and I would really encourage all of us to try and come together, and the first action that we can take is appointing councilmember Lee, who was, who was voted upon by the whole city, and she is a representative for the whole city, an API woman, a Jewish woman. She represents the best parts of the city. She represents North Central, and she deserves to be mayor. She's put in the time. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Chris Bressu, followed by Ethan Mizzi, and then Mary Cravalo.
Good evening, Chris Bressu, 20 plus year resident of San Mateo, homeowner in Hayward Park. First, thank you all for your service. Just a couple of simple messages. One, I want you to slow your roll. I want you to wait until you have the fifth person seated before you appoint Amo Lee as mayor. I think you can do that and follow the process of rotation. I think this is not at all about a personal thing. Amo, you and, you know, you and I know each other from the Caltrain times, right? So you know I'm coming from the heart here. I think it's easy to wait a few days, find a consensus candidate for the fifth position, avoid the perception of undue influence, do not disenfranchise this fifth person that's going to be working with you for years. Okay? Simple stuff. Amo, I'd like to see some leadership and some compromise. It's not just about asking your fellow council members to compromise. Mr. Lorraine, I'd ask that you stop pushing the partial process as the process. The city attorney has reiterated several times, you're following the process with a continuance.
Thank you.
So
Thank you, Chris. Next speaker is Ethan Mizzi, followed by Mary Cravalo, and then David Pollak.
Good evening. My name is Ethan Mizzi. This whole affair is an absolute disgrace. This is the second evening this week this still headless body has kept me from my homework. The city of San Mateo is supposed to be better than this. If councilmembers Diaz, Nash, and Newsom believe that this body can come to a consensus on filling the vacancy, then there shouldn't be a need for the mayor's tie breaking vote anyways. So I do not understand why they're willing to sow unnecessary discord and bad blood with their soon to be mayor and with their community. What's a better way to make yourselves infamous throughout the region and taint your image as brand new city council members than to conduct a backhanded legislative coup at your first meeting? Please appoint councilmember Lee to the position that she has justly earned. Amaranth Lee is the next rightful and legitimate mayor of San Mateo, so please stop the embarrassment and appoint Amo to be mayor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Mary Cravalo, followed by David Pollak, and then Noel Shard.
Council members, you've all worked really hard to be here, and I would like you to stand your ground. You were elected by your people, by everyone in San Mateo to be their voice, and I hope that you can all work together and find the right path in that. So I agree that it's only So I agree that it's only a few more days, five more days, and then come together and make the decision for the mayor and the deputy mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is David Pollak, followed by Noel Shard, and then Jack Matthews.
Hi, I'd just like to echo the consensus view of the county's political leadership, including Congressman Kevin Mullen, State Senator Josh Becker, the Democratic Party of San Mateo County, Peninsula Young Democrats, and many others up and down the peninsula. We defend the Charter of San Mateo. We support Amorans Lee's rightful place as mayor. We insist on the peaceful transfer of power now. We call on all San Mateo council members to uphold the Charter they were elected and sworn an oath to defend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Noel Shard, followed by Jack Matthews, and then Nina Patzaldo. Maybe.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Noel Shard, and I'm a longtime resident in District Five. In this unprecedented time with so much turnover on the council, our city needs a steady hand at the wheel in the role of mayor. We need someone who has been there, done that, and knows the ins and outs of city council, and that person is Councilmember Lee. Based on the events Monday night, it's clear that we need Mayor Lee to run the appointment meeting so our city does not see the same obstructionist debacle we saw on Monday. Frankly, this is a slap in the face to San Mateo's Asian community, which represents 25% of our city's population. As an Asian-American woman, I see this as an affront, that you are blocking the ascension of the first Asian-American woman in the history of our city to mayor. It makes me sick that my kids were here on Monday and had to see this happening in our city hall. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jack Matthews, followed by Nina Patzaldo, and then Carolyn Eldridge.
Good evening. My name is Jack Matthews, 50-year resident of the city of San Mateo and former mayor. Quite honestly, I don't really care what Josh Becker thinks about this proceeding. This is about San Mateo, and we, the citizens of San Mateo, are in a very unusual and unique moment in our history with a significant change in the composition of the council. There is no precedent for this situation. The city charter does allow for some flexibility at this moment. Amorans Lee would seem to be the logical choice to be the next mayor as a matter of tradition in the rotation. However, I believe that councils should interview and appoint a council member prior to voting for the mayor. A full council, five members, can then appoint the new mayor. That would diffuse concerns, get stressed by some in our community, that the new mayor would potentially have too much power to break a tie when voting for the new council member. Our community is fractured about this issue, and I believe the best choice is to lay those concerns off.
Thank you. Nina Patzaldo, I am so sorry.
Hi. Just wanted to sort of say that if the charter was designed to have five people in order to preserve democracy, then I think it's imperative to have five people before a mayor is appointed. So I'm in favor of waiting and taking the time to find the fifth council member.
Thank you. Next speaker is Carol Eldridge, followed by Rick Bonilla, and then Sarah Fields.
My name is Carol Eldridge. I am not in favor of waiting, and this is not keeping me from doing my homework. On Monday night, I was dismayed at what I witnessed. I had thought that there was going to be a straightforward transition to Amorans Lee as the new mayor of San Mateo, as part of a rotational system that has been in effect for many years and that has worked very well for San Mateo. Instead, what I witnessed was a distressing effort to rewrite the rules, ostensibly to serve the political ends of new council members who had just been sworn in only hours before. The first order of business for a new council is to elect the most senior member of the council as mayor. In the current situation, this is Amorans Lee, I call upon the council to win our respect by foregoing the further creation of division and disruption and performing the task that it was charged with by the city charter. We do not want the disregard of rules in an effort to corral power to become the new San Mateo way.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rick Bonilla, followed by Sarah Fields, and then Mitch Spiegel.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you for hearing us tonight. I am Rick Bonilla. I want to say that the charter does indeed foresee a situation exactly like what we have now, and that's why it allows for a tiebreaker. Tiebreaking is nothing new. It's not uncommon. It exists. It's public policy. And it's good public policy because it keeps us from staying up until 3:00 AM. So I want to say that city government, all structures of governance thrive on order. We need to have order. Right now, we're out of order, and we need to get back in order. There was an election, and the people that won, won. But the proper remedy for having one of your favorite candidates not win is not to change the rules afterward. If you look at the charter and you see there's a tiebreaker allowed in certain situations, and you don't think that's good, then you bring that to the city government, and you ask to change that. But you don't do it because, oh, there was an election, one of our favorite candidates didn't win. You do it when you see that's an issue, as if, as you say, you think it's undemocratic. That should have been brought up a while back. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. And next speaker is Sarah Fields, followed by Mitch Spiegel, and then Allison Proctor.
Good evening, Council. We find ourselves here yet again, and I hope that you were able to rest and think over the last day or so. You know, you obviously, having run myself, I understand you don't do this certainly for the money, certainly not for the glory. That's been made clear. But you're all leaders now, and that means there's a significant responsibility on your shoulders. And I want you to take that responsibility seriously, and also remember that each one of you will be in the position that Councilwoman Lee is in right now. And I want you to really put yourself in her shoes, because what Councilmember Newsom and Councilmember Diaz-Nash has done is embarrass and shame a colleague who was completely undeserving of that. And I want you to take that seriously and think about the position you've put each of yourselves in. So I wish you wisdom this evening and strength, and to really think about the way you're treating each other as colleagues. Thank you.
Thank you. Mitch Spiegel, followed by Allison Proctor, and then Christopher Conway.
Hello, Council. I'm a renter in District Five. I'm not a political guy. You know, you won't find activists in my bio. You won't find lobbyists, you know, group checks in my account. I come here as myself. I come here as a renter in District Five. Tonight's about good governance, and good governance at its core is checks and balances. I think we can all agree to that. It's checks and balances. Mr. Newsom, Mrs. Diaz-Nash, you know, I appreciate what you guys are doing, right? A fair, equal decision on who this fifth person will be is what's best for San Mateo. And I know it's a difficult decision, and some people, again, really do not like it. But we're talking about what's right is right, right? A fair, equal decision is right. And I'll repeat what I said Monday. You know, Mr. Lorraine, you came to our door and said you were going to be our voice. Who else here rents in District Five? I rent, and you too. That's great. Yeah, we have three of us, four of us. My vote is for you guys to work together to find that fifth person, and then fuck Amorans Lee. She deserves it. Let's go after the fact.
Thank you. Next speaker is Allison Proctor, followed by Chris Conway, and then Anthony Ng.
Hi, my name's Allison Proctor. I'm currently the board president for the San Mateo Foster City School Board, until next week, when we have our own reorg meeting. I'm speaking tonight on behalf of my own personal beliefs, but also wanted to share my experience as my first term as an elected official. I have learned that in order to serve our community and do what's best, it's important to build trust amongst trustees, or in your case, council members. You are not going to agree on every decision, but you are a team and must be united in your purpose, doing what's best for San Mateans. I believe that good governance includes following the norms and protocols which are laid out in the charter. On day one, this council is clearly divided, but there's still time to repair this by following the charter and selecting a mayor so that you can begin to do the work that you were elected to do as a team. Councilmember Lee is the only council member with experience on this council. She has earned this, and it's her turn. Please elect her as mayor tonight, and let's move forward together. Thank you.
Thank you. And next speaker is Christopher Conway, followed by Anthony Ng, and then Michael McCutcheon.
Good evening. My name is Christopher Conway. I was born, raised, educated, and I've worked in San Mateo my entire life. I attended both St. Gregory's School and Sarah High School. As a longtime resident, I feel a good arbiter of what is and what is not normal in the city of San Mateo. What I can call out as not normal is the fact that the city was threatened with a lawsuit by a litigious attorney in Southern California, forcing San Mateo into district elections. What is not normal is for a sitting city councilperson to insert herself into election outside her district and personally and deliberately attack a good man of faith based upon his religious beliefs. What is not normal is for a candidate to move to a newly-created district right before an election so that he could run against the man who was attacked by said sitting council member. Fellow San Mateans, I could tell you, we are not in normal times. I commend Mr. Newsom and Ms. Diaz-Nash for their perseverance under great stress in their first meeting, one of the shortest honeymoons I have personally ever witnessed. Keep fighting and do the best for what is San Mateo. Pick the council member first-
Thank you.
...then the mayor. Thank you.
Next speaker is Anthony Ng, followed by Michael McCutcheon, and then Michael Reagan.
Hi. Dear Councilmember, I'm Anthony Ng. I'm a longtime resident of San Mateo, and I'm also the EOC member of three different states formerly. I'm here to make a pledge. Lead by example. I came here because spirit of San Mateo that we are proud of, teamwork in working for challenge for the common good of San Mateo City, do the right thing for the integrity of San Mateo, which you all hold up for, for your children and for our second generation. Second, I hear a lot about inclusive and mutual respect, but while Amo patiently addressed each of your concerns, assured the fifth person would be unselect by all of your choice, you choose to kill the spirit, ruin the celebration of a rifle transfer of a mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Ng.
It dispec the whole city and the 20,000 voters who voted.
Next speaker is Michael McCutcheon, followed by Michael Reagan, and then Reverend Ben Myers.
Good evening, Michael McCutcheon. 28 years in San Mateo, from District Five. I'm here tonight because I'm very grateful for our process, and I'm grateful for our staff here in the city, our elected officials, and the love and joy that you are giving your time. We should be all coming together with a spirit of gratitude and not complaint, peace, peace within ourselves and with each other, concerns about our community and how to help others. And we can do this. It's a wonderful city. Just a few principles, not behind people or influence, but just principles, doing what's right, not who's right, and really trusting that we can work together for the best outcome. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Michael Reagan, followed by Reverend Ben Myers, and then Alan Matlidge.
Good evening. I was here until 3:00 in the morning, so I tried to hear everything that you said. And I want to clarify something. I believe that it wasn't Mrs. Lee that the two, Mrs. Nash and Mr. Newsom, were trying to object being mayor. It was the process of the coming Monday night when the election will be held to nominate a new councilperson, and that was my impression. You may clarify that. I don't hope this carries any weight, but I submitted my application today to join you. And I just would like to say that whether it's Mrs. Lee, or Mr. Newsom, or Mr. Lorraine that was mayor with that extra vote, I think to level the playing field, I would appreciate it if you guys could agree to wait until the mayor or this fifth person is put on.
Thank you, Mr. Reagan.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Reverend Ben Myers, followed by Alan Matlidge, and then Rebecca Schaaf.
Good evening, Reverend Ben Myers. I'm a renter in District One, and I served in North Central Parish for 10 years. I'm here to urge you to follow the city charter protocol and the rotation of mayoral election protocol that has served this city so well. I ask that you please do not begin your service to our city with what feels like a power play and a disregard of the democratic process. Please do not begin your service to our city with giving the majority of us a reason to question your integrity. Please do not be a reflection of our national politics. Trust the process. Trust that disagreements and differences of opinion can be resolved through that process. Please do not begin to build your foundation of service on the sand of suspicion rather than the bedrock of integrity. I'm not well-acquainted with all of your politics, so I'm not writing about specific issue. I'm not speaking about a specific issue. I'm talking about the democratic process and how it will feel to me and a vast host of others if you disregard that process and protocol.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan Matlidge, followed by Rebecca Schaaf, and then Nancy Schneider.
Yesterday, an article in the Mercury News described your last meeting as a political power struggle. If that's true, then one side sought to follow the advice of our city attorney and city manager, follow the clear intent of our city charter, and follow the established guidelines for its implementation. One side sought to abide by regular order in the council. The other side chose to disregard all of this. There's been much talk about democracy and superficial talk very often. We must remember that democracy is predicated on the rule of law. In this instance, the rule of law is proceeding according to regular order, not adopting an ad hoc process designed for the moment. We all make mistakes now and again and go down the wrong road, but it's not too late to turn back and return regular order to the council. It's not too late to restore the city's reputation. Please bring an end to all of this tonight.
Thank you. Rebecca Schaaf, followed by Nancy Schneider, and then Barbara Pathasik.
On Monday, it felt unprecedented for councilmembers to seek undue influence on the upcoming vacancy appointment by denying the rightful mayor the standard authority to break a tie. Sadly, it wasn't unprecedented. Mitch McConnell wielded the power not to bring a Supreme Court nomination to the Senate floor. John Eastman advised Pence that he had the authority not to certify election results. Quite a range of antics are being employed by people prioritizing their own power over democratic processes. On Monday, we heard moving praise for how outgoing councilmembers treated people. The clock is ticking on your legacies and the precedents you follow, the ways you behave towards your colleagues, and towards the public's right to have our elected representatives uphold standards of good governance is building your legacies today.
Thank you. Nancy Schneider, followed by Barbara Pathasik, and then Lisa Van de Vorden.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am a longtime, Nancy Schneider, I'm a longtime San Mateo homeowner and resident. I live in District One, and I'm incredibly disappointed in my new councilmember. Councilmember Nash is not representing our city's values of democracy, transparency, fairness, and good governance, even though she claims to be. Good governance requires that the city council votes for mayor and deputy mayor tonight as the city charter and guidelines state. If Councilmember Nash and Councilmember Newsom as well are sincere in their claims that they support the guidelines for mayor rotation, then the outcome of the vote would be the same tonight as when the fifth councilmember is seated. Councilmember Lee would be mayor. So why do they want to change the process? Do they want someone else to be mayor? Councilmembers Nash and Newsom, please do the right thing and elect Councilmember Lee as mayor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Barbara Pathasik, followed by Lisa Van de Vorden, and then Belinda Schlobber. Thank you. Barbara Pavasik, followed by Lisa Van de Vorday, and then Belinda Schlobber.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Pavasik, and I'm also a neighbor of Nancy's in District One. I've been a resident for 30 years in San Mateo, and I came from San Francisco. And when I first moved here, I was just amazed I could walk into City Hall and get an answer for a planning question. We have very good governance, and there's been precedent set for 128 years. And there is no reason that I've heard of to change it. People say there's a rush. There's no rush. We had an election in November. We're now December 7th.
Speak it to the mic.
We had a lot of time to think about this. No one is rushing. We knew what was going to happen. We thought Diane was going to get elected. This is not a surprise to anyone. So this, to me, is very disingenuous. We have one person on the council who was elected by the whole city, and that is Ms. Lee. She's done a wonderful job so far, and I think she deserves to be the mayor. And I think all the rest of this is disingenuous, and it is a power grab, and it's not becoming of the city. And I would encourage all of our neighbors and all of you to act neighborly and to do the right thing and have Mayor Lee.
Thank you. Next speaker is Lisa Van de Vorday, followed by Belinda Schlobber, and then Gloria Moreno.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Van de Vord. Despite what many have said tonight and on Monday night as well, the democratic process and protocol to select the mayor has been followed. You all voted, and it resulted in a two-to-two tie. No surprise there. And I'm sure that's disappointing to you, Councilmember Lee, but that's the way it is, and that's the democratic process here in San Mateo. You are not appointed automatically. Otherwise, the city manager or city attorney, I don't know, would have sworn you in on Monday night without a vote. But a vote is required by each of you. The only way, truly the only way to break the deadlock is to seat the fifth city council member. Then the vote for mayor will take place without a tie, and everyone will be happy, including, I believe, you, Councilmember Lee. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Belinda Schlobber, followed by Gloria Moreno, and then Tom Lees.
Good evening, council members. Thank you for letting me speak. I am incredibly disappointed with the way this is coming out and turning out. Lisa Diaz Nash, your website on LinkedIn. It says, "I am running for city council to be a voice of reason and collaboration on city council, an advocate for our neighborhoods and a creator of solutions, not divisions." What I see here is a divided council, and what I see is a travesty for San Mateo. How are you ever going to decide on this imaginary fifth person, as divided as you are, by Monday? How? I just don't see how. It's Councilmember Lee. She is the only qualified person to become mayor. She should be mayor, you know? A tiebreaker, that's what the mayor does. It's obviously a power grab. It was obviously planned on your part. Lisa Diaz Nash, I am very disappointed in you having worked on sister district.
Thank you.
Can't believe it.
Gloria Moreno, followed by Tom Lees, and then Tanner Walters.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gloria. I'm a renter in District Five. I'm proud to be represented by Adam Lorraine. And before I run out of time, I just want to say that I am here to support Amo Lee for mayor. She had worked hard. She's the one qualified, and it's her turn to be a mayor of San Mateo. And I want to thank everyone who is serving, but especially these two people, Amo and Adam, the young people that are trying to shape their future, because their future is different maybe than you, Mr. Newsom and Ms. Nash. And the other thing that I want to talk to you, Ms. Nash, is that you're the oldest here as a council member, and I'm the oldest here. I can be maybe the mother, we both can be the mother of Adam and Amo. By what example? You have young people, two young girls. So I don't know anything about them, but what is the example that you're sending that you can bully your way to power?
Thank you.
Let's not do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Tom Lees, followed by Tanner Walters, and then Jackie Rigoni.
Hi. This has been a fun meeting. I hope everyone's having as much fun as I am. I want to congratulate my friend Adam. He's in my district, and Lisa, and Rob, and Amoritz, thank you so much for your service. I have known Rob and Lisa for years, and for anyone to question their integrity or their motives, to me, is actually offensive. And I think that Amoritz is going to be a great mayor, and I hope she's going to be elected Monday because there's no rushing into this or anything like that. The normal way we solve any election is with a three-to-two or four-to-three vote, and the comparisons to Mitch McConnell and Supreme Court justices are not appropriate, and they don't make any sense here. I think that I really honor all of you for serving and taking a beating tonight on both sides, but I think once this is over, I hope we can all come together and be the friends and neighbors that we are and appreciate living in this beautiful, wonderful city and just being grateful for all the great things we have in life. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker is Tanner Walters, followed by Jackie Rigoni, and then Michael Winehour.
Hi, council. I'm going to try not to lean over too far. But my name is Tanner Walters. I live in District One, and I'm extremely disappointed, frustrated, and slightly at a loss for words for what councilmembers Newsom and Nash are doing here. I agree, it could be hunky-dory. We're all neighbors. That's fine. But you're breaking the process here. We have a process to follow. We're out here talking about, it's just five days. Yeah. We're going to survive five days. That's not the point. The point is that you're making up fake rules for us to try and follow now after the fact. So I would love to see the process move forward because you're at a deadlock, and you're going to stay at a deadlock, whether it's this or another topic. So let's follow the process, make Amoritz mayor. And again, I'm really frustrated by this, but thank you for your time tonight because I know it's hard.
Thank you. Jackie Rigoni, followed by Michael Winehour, and then Emelda Navarro.
The peaceful transfer of power is a hallmark of our democracy. On Monday, councilmembers Diaz Nash and Newsom blocked the transfer of power and left San Mateo without a mayor and vice mayor. Let's be clear, you have left the city in a dangerous situation. You have a quorum. Many, many crucial, important decisions are made with four council members. And yet, two of you are prioritizing the lesser item of business of selecting a fifth council member over your very first order of business, which is to select the mayor. Please prioritize according to the charter the peaceful transfer of power before moving on to any other business and elect Councilmember Lee. I'm ready to celebrate with you, but I'm also ready to support you as long as necessary to, as they say, stand your ground. It is the higher ground.
Thank you. Next speaker is Michael Winehour, followed by Emelda Navarro, and then Chelsea Bonini.
Dear council members, I'm urging you to do what's right and fair and wait until 12:12 after the fifth council member has been chosen to select the new mayor. Enough with the fear-mongering about not having a mayor for a week during the holidays. We will endure. Similarly, enough with the comparisons to J-6 McConnell and Trumpian tactics. That's been well covered. There's no coup. We're not hurting. Our reputation isn't damaged. A power transfer is in no danger of not being peaceful, implying that is what's embarrassing. And the idea of Mullins Becker and the county Dem machine trying to intimidate our new council into a rushed decision, that's embarrassing. Being a slave to a process that didn't account at all for this scenario versus being judicious and wise in your selection process, that's embarrassing. Two of the speakers tonight, Sarah Fields and Nicole Fernandez, are potential mayoral candidates who would benefit directly from Councilmember Lee's appointment to mayor. That's embarrassing. It's way too important that we get this right. There are billions of dollars in land use decisions being made next year, and getting this right is way too important. Let's get this right. We can wait five days.
Excuse me. I can't handle this. Thank you for helping me do my job, but I got it.
Thank you for your time. Start bouncing, people, man.
No clapping. Thank you very much. Our next speaker. Our next speaker is Emelda Navarro, followed by Chelsea Bonini, and then Virginia.
I'll be short. I'll be short. I don't want to be young. Good evening, everybody. My name is Emelda Navarro, and I live in District Three. I'm here to support Councilmember Lee to be the next new mayor of San Mateo. With that being said, I ask you, Ms. Diaz Nash and Mr. Newsom, to do the right thing and appoint Mrs. Amoritz Lee to be the next new mayor of San Mateo without any further delays and do not embarrass San Mateo anymore in social media because there's been a lot of things saying it's embarrassing. Thank you. Amo Lee, si se puede.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chelsea Bonini, followed by Virginia McIsaac, then Drew.
Good evening, honorable council members. I'm Chelsea Bonini. I am San Mateo's representative on the San Mateo County Board of Education for Area Four, which is the city of San Mateo. I'm also a resident of District Five, and I've lived in San Mateo for 21 years. I'm speaking tonight on my own behalf. On Monday, councilmembers Diaz Nash and Newsom rationalized a way to sidestep our city's charter directive to appoint a mayor and deputy mayor on Monday. Yes, you could have continued this meeting tonight, clearly, but you should have chosen your mayor. Not doing so was a direct violation of the purpose and intent of our city's charter. You need to correct your missteps on Monday. You need to restore our trust and faith in you as our city leaders. You need to appoint Councilwoman Lee as our mayor.
Thank you. Next speaker is Virginia McIsaac, followed by Drew, and then Marlene Tam.
I, too, am embarrassed by the bad name-calling and the obstructionism that is being thrown at Lisa Diaz Nash and Rob Newsom Jr. I don't believe that that is the case. You believe in your strong convictions, and you should stand by them. If there's to be compromise, then I would suggest the compromise would be the mayor-to-be, Amoritz Lee, give up her tie-breaking vote in regards to the fifth council. That would be an easy fix to getting this moving forward. If that's not the case, then I think that we should wait for the fifth council member. And I have no doubt that Amoritz has the ability to be the next mayor, but I would like to see a full council do the voting and making sure that that's an even, just outcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Drew, followed by Marlene Tam, and then Lauren Fitzgerald.
Good evening. So I'm not even completely sure what I'm going to say because I found out about this today, just reading a headline. And I have respect for each one of you, and you have your reasons. And once I understood what was happening, kind of, because I've come to meetings for years and understand a variety of things, and I don't say a lot. I don't get behind the scenes. I'm just trying to do the right thing. And it seems like, okay, I respect each one of you, why you have the opinion you have. And I have no doubt, like, Amoritz Lee is going to, that's what I'm expecting. We'll be mayor soon. I was thinking it'd be Monday. It'll be next Monday, maybe, and stuff. And it's like, compromise goes both ways. Compromise goes all kinds of different ways. That's what I've seen talking to people. I'm confident the city staff can handle it either way. I'm confident all of you will do your best along the way. You all have your opinions, and you're representing people that have opinions. And thank you for just doing your best.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marlene Tam, followed by Lauren Fitzgerald, and then Jordan Grimes.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, but I just felt compelled to. The election of mayor is not just a ceremonial, technical issue. The issue at hand is about equitable power and representation. For me, the rush to name a mayor feels like a power grab. If precedents reign, I would not have my thousand-plus federal rights that the majority of Americans have always had. I applaud the courage of councilmembers Nash and Newsom for making a stance for equity of power amongst the council and for the fifth member as well as for the residents. I do not see this as a racial issue, but an issue of full representation and equity for all.
Thank you very much. Lauren Fitzgerald, followed by Jordan Grimes, and then Anders Fung.
Thank you once again to our city staff and our council for your relentless work. I'm going to read some excerpts from some of your campaign websites indicating the promises that you've made to voters. "Councilmember Nash, I want to be a voice of reason and collaboration on our city council, an advocate for our neighbors and a creator of solutions, not divisions." "Councilmember Newsom, I understand the importance of strong leadership and local representation. These are unkept promises to San Mateans. Councilmember Nash, we share many memories from the recent election. I still respect you, and I know that you can do the right thing. Councilmember Newsom, like your kids, I attended St. Gregory's School where they learned the "Faith" acronym. The "I" in faith stands for integrity, and I'd like to see you have some tonight. I trust both of you to do the right thing. Do not let me down."
Thank you. Next speaker is Jordan Grimes, followed by Anders Fung, and then Elaine Salinger.
Good evening, council. Jordan Grimes, 19th Avenue Park. I'm here tonight as both a lifelong resident of San Mateo, as well as on behalf of the Peninsula Young Democrats, where I serve as political director. We strongly condemn the actions of councilmembers Nash and Diaz, excuse me, Nash and Newsom, and urge the immediate installation of Amoritz Lee as mayor. There has been a profound miscalculation here. There was a nakedly transparent power play, an attempted end run around the rules to further two people's own political ends. And not only did it fail, but it failed in a spectacularly public way. Public opinion is overwhelmingly against this divisive action and will only get worse, not better. We urge you to put an end to it now before your entire terms are tainted. There is time to change course. There is time to salvage your reputations. There is time still to be the community leaders you pledged to be, both on the campaign trail and just two nights ago, moments before all of this began. Follow the city attorney's advice. Follow protocol. We implore you, in the words of Spike Lee, "Do the right thing."
Thank you. Next speaker is Anders Fung, followed by Elaine Salinger, and then Karen Sid.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of San Mateo and our council. Thank you very much for speaking, an opportunity to speak in front of you. We're all seen, all of us. First of all, I want to just be clear. I speak in front of you tonight, not as an elected official, not as a board member of the API Caucus, but as a concerning citizen of San Mateo County. We're all sworn to protect the Constitution of the United States. We're all sworn to protect the Constitution of California, and by definition, to protect and uphold the charter of our city. And this is the job we sign up to do. Tonight, we have an opportunity, just as we did last time, to uphold that charter, to implement that protocol as it should, regardless of who it is. Because the protocol doesn't spell out who it should be, but it spells out how it rotates. And that is our peaceful transfer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Elaine Salinger, followed by Karen Sid, and then Margaret Garcia.
Good evening. My name's Elaine Salinger. And this effort to stop Amoritz Lee from being voted in as mayor was a premeditated act. It was a back-room deal. That's very clear. This was planned behind closed doors. This was not something transparent, which was what both of you ran on. Both Nash and Newsom ran on in their campaign. You claim that not happening here. So it smells of a Brown Act violation. I'm on the San Mateo County B-PAC. We have seven members. If more than two of us speak together outside of the public realm, I've been told it's a Brown Act violation. So here we have two out of four people discussing things in the back room. And I think that the attorney And I think that the attorney needs to talk to you about this. So, yeah.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Karen Sid, followed by Margaret Garcia. And this is our last speaker, Margaret Garcia. Margarita, thank you so much.
Good evening, council. I'm a longtime San Mateo resident, and I commend the new council members for their convictions to do what is right by heading off what would be a law-upset vote without a full council seated. I urge you not to bow to pressure and alarmist arguments over what amounts to waiting a few days. It's important to have a full council to make the decision of mayor and to make that decision fairly. We are in a unique situation, and therefore it is not breaking protocol, as there is not protocol for this exact circumstance. I also urge you to not bow to the arguments of racism, as that is immaterial to the situation and is merely a distraction. I agree with waiting until the Fifth Council member is appointed, and I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And our last speaker is Margarita Garcia.
Hi there. My name's Maggie, for short. I stand before you as once the president of Colleges San Mateo for Student Body Government. I also stand here as a voice for my generation, millennials. And to be honest, I'm here with quite a panic because I've pushed so hard for my generation to vote. So now my biggest worry is, what do I tell my generations, like, in front of me, before me, that their vote might not matter when stuff like this happens? How are we going to be able to answer this and have them believe and trust that they can actually vote and that they will make a difference? Because that's my biggest worry right now. Thank you.
Thank you. And at this time, we will move to the online commenters. If you have not raised your hand, if you could please, in the Zoom call, raise your hand at this time. And right now, I see 35 commenters there. So I will begin with the first one, and Dr. Liz Lester, please begin. Please unmute yourself. Dr. Leiser? She may be having difficulty, so we'll go to the next speaker. Greg Derrick, please go ahead and make your comments.
Thank you. Thank you, council. My name's Derek Kikuchi. I'm a longtime business owner in District Five. And my dad was interned in World War II. Through the lens of the experience he hammered into me, the need to always work harder than anyone else and follow the rules, and then you'll get ahead. It's my life experience and 64 years of witness that I learned that it often is not that case. And even now, a person of color can do these things, and the rules will change just before it's their turn. And for this reason, even the appearance of such changes in process when a person of color is involved can be triggering for many. I'm proud to own a business in a city and live in a county that raised the progress flag during Pride Month, and I'll feel even prouder of a city and county that lives up to the aspirations of that flag. I urge installing Councilmember Lee as mayor this evening, and I thank the council in advance for the amazing work I know they will do together on behalf of San Mateo with her as mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Arus Harmon. Please go ahead.
Hello. I was a resident for seven years in the Los Prados neighborhood, priced out of San Mateo when I attempted to shop for a house, now live in San Bruno, where I became chair of the Planning Commission. Still love San Mateo. Worked for many years at the Solar City Office on the west side. I want to note that there are plenty of democratic processes that have tie-breaking systems. That's just, you know, this is the process prescribed by your charter. And I think you should consider that if you abandon your charter's process and attempt to act on any other matter, that cannot be considered to have been done in good order. Should you appoint a Fifth Member first before selecting your mayor and deputy mayor, that act may haunt you. Anyone unhappy with a council decision in the coming two years will be in a position to bring a challenge to the legitimacy of that action. Maybe you win that lawsuit, maybe. But even if you do, a wealthy litigant such as a developer could cost your city hundreds of thousands, even millions of dollars before that victory. Do not call the legitimacy of your government into question by ignoring standard process. You should hold the vote, appoint Ms. Lee as the mayor, and move forwards.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rick Ballard. Oh, no, I'm sorry. The next speaker is Julie Lynn.
Thanks, Patrice. You're a beautiful goddess creature, and we worship you. On behalf of the San Mateo Labor Council, which represents over 85,000 workers and their families, 10,000 and plus of which reside in the city of San Mateo, we ask the council to move forward with the selection of Councilmember Lee as mayor. Waiting until a Fifth Member is appointed has nothing to do with the whole city being represented. The whole city already is. You received applications from several wonderful and incredibly qualified individuals, but the public won't be given an opportunity to vote on them. The charter doesn't provide a vehicle for that and filling a vacancy. That's your task as council, and one that we hope you'll undertake collegially and respectfully of one another. Councilmember Lee is the only current member elected at large, having earned nearly 24,000 votes citywide in the last election. That's about twice the votes of our newly-elected council members combined. There's no reason to continue working to circumvent the charter nor to buck over 100 years of tradition. You all ran for office because you love this city and because you're committed to working tirelessly to make it even better. Let's move on from this distraction and get back to the good governance that the voters trusted you to provide. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Rick Ballard. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, council. I'm a resident here who was with you all the way until 3:00 AM last time. So I apologize that I'm not able to be there in person today. A minority continue to ask that you delay or don't rush. It's just one week, or why not wait? It is not rushing to perform the duty you were called upon to do at the time you're expected to do it. It is supposed to be a unanimous procedural vote based on established rotation. That is not rushing. The result doesn't change whether four or five people. Charter says first, you reorganize a new council on day one, then you conduct business. You are already behind schedule. You are late. To delay a few more days is to force the council to perform critical business before the council is properly formed. Two of you may be concerned about the mayoral tiebreaker because you do not have it this time. You will next time if you don't break the process and the norms now. I believe Councilmembers Lee and Lorraine will look for a bridge-building candidate regardless, but you must allow council to function as designed and intended, even when it is not politically convenient. Anything else is democratically destructive, politicizing an intentionally apolitical mayoral rotation system. The time is overdue to appoint your mayor. What you do today will follow you for the rest of your political career. You are already behind schedule, the clock is ticking, and the Bay Area is watching. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Rafael Reyes.
Hello, council members. My name is Rafael Reyes, a 22-year homeowner in San Mateo. I currently reside in District Three. I want to note for the new council members that this kind of deadlock is exactly what the transition rules are meant to address. And those transition rules include the sequence, the normal rotation for mayor, and the tie-breaking vote. Those two things are, in fact, central to the orderly functioning of cities. And unfortunately, from time to time, I have observed other cities on the peninsula sink into exactly this kind of problem. I won't name particular cities. Some are still gripped by deep divisions between the council members and unable to perform basic duties. And it is exactly this kind of behavior that creates those situations. So I would urge you to move forward, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Robert Whitehair. Please go ahead, sir.
Councilmembers and members of staff, thank you for being here tonight and doing your good work. I've lived in San Mateo District One for the better part of 40 years. I'm speaking to all of you, but primarily councilmembers Nash and Lorraine. Excuse me, Nash and Newsom. Congratulations again on your election to the San Mateo City Council. I've known both Nash and Newsom for some time and know how hard you worked to get on the council. You deserve to be there. You can accomplish great things. You will get your turn. But I was appalled by your actions Monday night. I'm utterly embarrassed for San Mateo. I see the region is taking note. And I want to say, regional trust is hard to gain, easy to lose. I have to finish by saying that if Amherst Lee is not named mayor tonight, that for me, it will be a permanent stain on both your terms. And I will not be afraid to share my deep concern within my District One and my homeowners association. Please, and as madness tonight, trust is hard to gain, easy to lose.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ryan Motashimi.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council. There is a dissonance between supporting Councilwoman Lee as mayor with words and then voting no on her appointment. The charter clearly states what should happen in the event there is a deadlock on council for a council appointment. That is not undue influence. That is prescribed process, process which you are delaying by perverting the intentions of the charter. If you do not like the policy set out in the charter, change it. But don't try to change it by making there be no mayor whatsoever. That is a dangerous and divisive precedent to set. Every year that the mayor is selected, the mayor is selected by those on the council with the full knowledge that the mayor might be put in the position of casting a tie-breaking vote in the event of a deadlock. A majority of council members today have expressed support for Councilmember Lee as mayor. That means that the outcome of a mayoral vote after a council appointment would not depend on who the Fifth Council Member is even. So Councilmember Newsom, I urge you to make good on your support for Councilwoman Lee as mayor and stop making us have to provide comment again and again on the same issue to see a resolution. And Councilmember Nash, apply the values that you stated regarding appointing a mayor and vice mayor in a fair manner.
Thank you, Ryan.
You will be failing to uphold your stated principle if you fail to appoint a mayor today. Thank you.
Next speaker is Ariel Angel. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Ariel Angel, citizen of the wonderful District Two, and I'd like to express my disappointment in the egregious acts of Monday's meeting. I don't think the motives for delaying the mayoral rotation were at the best interest of all citizens of the city, and I am highly disappointed in the council members that decided to do so. In fact, I feel like we citizens are being held hostage here. Over 23,000 citizens voted for Councilmember Lee during her election. Nearly 400 citizens signed up petition to make her mayor immediately, just in the last few hours. I ask you, what is undemocratic about this? Councilmember Lee is more than qualified. Are we talking about one council member or thousands of San Mateans? Remind yourselves who are you working for here? Enough of this self-inflicted deadlock. Get it done tonight, please. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And for the record, I just wanted to say that the last speaker online will be Antonio Lopez. And if you still have comments to make, because we won't go beyond Mr. Lopez, you can please send them in, and they will become part of the official record. Please email them to clerk@cityofsanmateo.org. So the next speaker we have is Alexandra Dev. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. I've heard a few people express concern that the decision to place Councilmember Lee as mayor is a rash decision and asking those of you to wait. This cannot be the case of selecting the Councilmember Lee as mayor is following the protocol established in San Mateo's charter. Therefore, committing to the procedure is clearly defined action that follows the letter of the law. Furthermore, following the established policy ensures that the action that is one that reinforces our democratic values. To ask to do anything else undermines these values and the legitimacy of our municipal government. When we commit to following the charter and its protocol, it limits the potential to obfuscate and undermine democratic actions and allow for other subsequent challenges to our procedures. There's a reason that so many have spoken about upholding the charter and its protocols tonight, as well as in the past week. It's important to note that many of these supporters include our former mayor, our congressional member-elect Kevin Mullen, county board supervisor-elect Noel LaCorzo, and so many more. I encourage you to elect Councilmember Lee as mayor tonight to follow and uphold the letter of the law and do what is right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
And the next speaker is Annette Lynn. Please go ahead, Annette.
Yeah, I wanted to say my last bit about the youth.
Oh, hello. Hi, I'm Annette Lynn. Hi, I'm a brand-spanking-new resident of San Mateo. I literally moved here like two weeks ago from Mountain View, and I'm not going to pretend like Mountain View hasn't had some crazy city council meetings, but I have to say that the optics are not great on this one, and I am disappointed that this has to be my first act of civic participation in my new home, especially when it sounds like the city charter already anticipated this situation. It's not just waiting five days, as other callers have said before and speakers, since there is material council business that is supposed to take place during that time. And just taking my last 10 seconds back to the optics. I am an Asian woman. I hate to see an Asian woman as well be treated this way. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Gary Trot.
Good evening. My name is Gary Trot. I am a resident of San Mateo community. Thank you for allowing me to speak at tonight's continuation of the council meeting. Collectively, you all represent and should act for the greater good of all San Mateo citizens, regardless of which district anyone resides in or special interest groups. If you feel the charter process should be changed, fine. Do it at a time when all parties can clearly express their perspectives, but not at a time when due process is held hostage and the operational aspects of running a city are put on hold. Contrary to prior discussion, the delay is clearly harming the working cohesiveness of the city functionality. The delay is jeopardizing the city's legislative functions and impeding the progress of governance. The San Mateo charter is clear on the next course of action. Please quit stalling and get on with the business of choosing Amherst as the mayor and running San Mateo City for the benefit of all residents. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Katie Bush. Please go ahead, Katie.
Hello, I'm speaking only for myself. Councilmembers Newsom and Diaz Nash mentioned small d democracy in their opening statements. I'd like to explain why you are being anti-democratic. You are two people. Only a majority, three or more, can make a decision for our council. The council guidelines were adopted by a council majority. Those guidelines say the rotating mayor process shall guide the council's selection of the mayor. However, a majority of the city council can disregard that process. You two are not a majority. You cannot disregard that process. Your actions currently are the will of a minority attempting to override what was previously adopted by a majority. Those attempts to rule by minority are, by definition, anti-democratic. To put it simply, the ends do not justify the means. Regardless whether waiting will result in a more democratic appointment process, that is not your decision to make. San Mateo City Council, through its guidelines, has already decided that Amherst Lee should be mayor right now. You must follow the will of the people.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Jay Ford.
Evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Great. Thank you, Patrice. You are a gem. Appreciate you. Calling in tonight, want to say thank you for the opportunity to speak here. I've been on, watching this meeting for, going on two hours now. I thank you all for being involved in our city's matters. I am a longtime resident of San Mateo, someone who grew up in this community, someone who is priced out of this community, someone who has seen far too many people my age, in their 20s, have to leave this community. And I'm incredibly disappointed to see novice councilmembers Diaz Nash and Newsom embrace the rules of the city only if those rules work for them. Mr. Newsom, you claimed that you wanted the process of selecting a mayor in your opening statement to be as democratic and fair as possible. And to you and to Councilwoman Diaz Nash, I say that it is deeply undemocratic, deeply unfair to simply toss aside the city charter. And it's frustrating to see folks embrace the rules only if they work for them. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Angelica Ramos Allen. Please go ahead.
Good evening, council members. My name is Angelica Ramos Allen. I am here on behalf of the National Women's Political Caucus. A peaceful transition or transfer of power is a concept important to democratic government in which the leadership of a government peacefully hands over control to a newly-elected leadership. This matters whether it is at the state, especially in our city councils. This councilmember's review.
Angelica, I'm going to have you restart. Something happened to your sound.
Can you hear me now? See, and I said I wasn't going to ask. Can you hear me now? Can you hear me now?
Yes, I can hear you now. Thank you.
Can I start again? I can start again. Okay.
Yes.
Good evening, council members. Good evening, council members. My name is Angelica Ramos Allen with the National Women's Political Caucus. A peaceful transition or transfer of power is a concept important to democratic governments in which leadership of a government peacefully hands over control to a newly elected leadership. This matters at the state, federal, and especially city councils. At this past Monday's regularly scheduled annual reorganization, there was a refusal to enforce the city's charter to rotate to the next eligible council member into the mayoral seat. We urge the new members of the city council to legally comply with the city's charter and elect the next eligible council member, in this case, Councilmember Lee, to be seated as the next mayor of San Mateo. To do otherwise is antithetical to the rules of order and decorum. As a point of personal privilege at a time when APR women are asked to make themselves small to please the status quo, we are, we think this is effectively supposed to people. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Rena Cord. Go ahead, please.
Hi, thank you. So it's been less than two years since President Biden took office, but it seems a lot of people here kind of already forgetting what happens to a society when people disregard the norms and up end precedent. This shouldn't be about Council, Councilmember Lee. This shouldn't be about housing. This should be about doing what we are supposed to do according to the rules of order, and we know what that is in our charter. San Mateo deserves better than to be put through this, especially after the last four years before President Biden. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Brian K. Please go ahead, Brian.
Thank you, council members. My name is Brian Kiefer. I'm a homeowner here in San Mateo and also a member of the Peninsula DSA, although I'm speaking on my own behalf and not on behalf of the organization. I support the immediate appointment of Amorans Lee. The Charter and precedent are clear in this case. And also, as former Mayor Benia pointed out here, there is a provision for this quote unquote "unique" situation, which is the tiebreaker vote. As for references that have been made to Mitch McConnell regarding the Supreme Court and the January sixth attempt to prevent transfer of power, I find those apt. If people find, you know, are angry about that comparison, I'd ask you to examine why. Both were cynical ploys to override the democratic process and try to enforce an outcome based process instead of a rules based process, which is exactly what Members Newsom and Nash are attempting to do. Please appoint Amorans Lee now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alexis Lewis.
Good evening. I'm Alexis Lewis, the First Vice President of the San Mateo NAACP. I have a statement from our branch president, the Reverend Lori Owens. We are concerned that your reluctance we are concerned that your reluctance to follow the Charter's protocol and appoint Ms. Lee as mayor may be the result of racial discrimination. We will monitor this situation closely and encourage you to do the right thing and appoint Ms. Lee, who is the most senior and most qualified person in the council at this time. We appreciate you appointing her mayor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ann Paulson. Please unmute yourself.
Good evening, council. I'm Ann Paulson. In recent years, we've seen an unfortunate rejection by some politicians across the country of processes and norms when they don't like the results. These hypocrites pretend to principles, but in fact, they just want to grab power by any means, no matter how unethical. I ask council members Diaz-Nash and Newsom to search your consciences. Do you actually believe there is some principle such that Councilmember Lee shouldn't become mayor tonight? Do you actually believe the tie breaking procedure the city has used for a long time is unfair suddenly? Would you believe these same principles if your side was winning? Or do you just want power and you don't care about norms and traditions if they get in your way? I hope you act with principle.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is call in user number one.
Yes, good evening. This is Karen Harrell. I hope that someone is finding this additional public comment, hours by now, of some benefit. The only thing that I've heard new is a rather shameful attempt at public shaming of two members of the council who have a strong opinion and are entitled to continue to vote that way, and some threats of legal action. Other than that, I don't know that we're hearing anything that we haven't already heard. My concern is there's a lot of talk about protocol and what the proper procedure is. Normally, proper procedure is that the person who's being nominated does not participate in the actual election process, and they certainly don't second their own nomination. If it takes that, then you know you already have a divided situation. I heartily endorse what Jack Matthews said. It's very clear there's been a major attempt to get a large number of people on board who have no residence or voice in the city of San Mateo, nor should they. So I would encourage people to continue this to next week. Let's get the fifth member on the board. Let's do the proper thing.
Thank you, Karen.
Yes, you're welcome.
Next speaker is Angeli Mishra. Please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, my name is Angeli. I'm 15. I'm a high school student in San Mateo in District Three, actually. Mr. Newsom, your district. Frankly, I think it's embarrassing that I have to be here during finals week when I have hours of homework to do tonight. So I can tell the people that San Mateo elected because they trusted them, that they should uphold the charter of our community. I think it's incredibly disrespectful to all the wonderful things Ms. Lee has done for our community, because this is not about adding a couple more days or hearing the voice of a fifth member. This is about blocking Ms. Lee from becoming mayor. Waiting a few days has a far bigger impact because it shows the true colors of this council. You aren't actually following any sort of technicality or trying to include the voice of this fifth member. You are actually going against the suggestion of the Charter. Amorans is the most experienced person sitting on the dais right now, while Councilmembers Diaz and Nash, Diaz-Nash and Newsom, you've only been here for a few days. I look up to policymakers and I hope to serve my community like you do, but I'm not looking up to you now because I would never use these tactics to get power. I already see a country that's divided and it disappoints me greatly. Please don't bring that to San Mateo.
Thank you. The next speaker is Maggie Shawn Laxton. Please go ahead, Shawn.
Hi, this is Shawn Laxton. So I've only lived in San Mateo for a little over a year. I've spent most of my adult life living in Chicago. I've also lived for a brief moment in LA. You know, unfortunately, Councilmember Diaz-Nash and Councilmember Newsom's actions resemble the sad and dirty machine politics of those two cities. Councilmember Nash is on record at Monday's meeting saying that she has concerns about the mayor's tie breaking powers. If that was a concern, she should have brought that up before they took oath and started obstructing democratic processes and norms. Based off of their actions, I do not trust Councilmember Nash and Newsom's intent, no matter how civil and carefully rehearsed their words may be. This is a premeditated obstruction of democracy. I believe that Nash and Newsom want to unfairly use a fifth council member they like and force their agenda over Councilmember Lee. They won't need to worry about her mayoral veto powers if they have a three-two majority. I believe in the words of Joel Embiid, trust the process, vote for Lee as mayor tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Shawn. The next speaker is Maggie Trin. Please go ahead, Maggie.
Good evening. Thank you to city staff as well as everyone who's been making public comment. I've lived in San Mateo for over 10 years. I'm currently a District Three resident. I'm here to reiterate my strong support for following the Charter and selecting the mayor and deputy mayor tonight. Mr. Newsom, I wanted to address you specifically as you were my city council member. I believe I saw you earlier this afternoon with a recall Amelie magnet on your car. This was downtown at about 4:45 PM. Given that you expressed you would select Ms. Lee as mayor, I ask you to state on the record tonight whether you support the recall effort. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Helen Tong Ishikawa. Please go ahead, Helen.
Good evening, city council members. My name is Helen, and I have been a resident of San Mateo for the last 10 years. I live in District One, Councilmember Diaz-Nash's district, and I'm calling on you tonight to support Councilmember Lee's nomination of mayor of our city. It's really critical that we put aside political interests today and allow the most senior, experienced member of this city council to take her rightful seat as the mayor today. It's important for our city administration to have steady leadership amidst these transitions in leadership, and not choosing a mayor today will inevitably lead to continued deadlock in the coming weeks. And lastly, as a fellow Asian American woman, it's been very painful and triggering to watch another woman of color have her experience questioned publicly by those who have less experience when this action should be procedural and has been procedural for the last 128 years. I would be proud to have Councilmember Lee as the next mayor of our city, and I'm disappointed that my fellow neighbors and council representative would take our city backwards by blocking this historic nomination. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Stephanie Reyes. Please go ahead. Stephanie, do you want to unmute yourself?
Sorry, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
My name is Stephanie Reyes. I'm a resident of San Mateo's Bay Meadows neighborhood. I urge you to appoint Councilmember Lee as mayor tonight. It is her turn. She was duly elected in a citywide race. She has worked hard in her three years on the council, and she is the only council member with experience. To not appoint her tonight is patently unfair, and preventing the rightful and timely appointment of the first AAPI mayor in San Mateo's history is particularly appalling. Councilmember Lee deserves to be appointed mayor, not next week, not next month, tonight.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Peter Mandell.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank the council members and also the city staff for sitting through all the hours of presentations last one day, night, and then again tonight. During that time, I've heard many passionate presentations, polished presentations, some interesting thoughts, and people who put a lot of thought into the presentation. However, I don't believe that any of those presentations have convinced any of the council members to change their mind or change their vote. I doubt my presentation is going to change anyone's vote. But with that preamble, I would like to say I fully support what former Mayor Clay Mack said and what former Mayor Jack Matthews said, that we should wait for the fifth council member to be appointed and a compromised person selected, and then go ahead and select the next mayor. If the next mayor is Councilmember Lee, I'm fine with that, but we should have the fifth council member in place first. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Chester Fung. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening. My name is Chester Fung. I'm a homeowner in San Mateo. As part of the city's 20% Asian American population, I'm proud to be represented on the city council by Amorans Lee, and I want to see her serve as she was elected to do. And I want to add my voice to the call to please appoint Councilwoman Lee mayor tonight. That is the right thing to do procedurally. It's consistent with norms and protocol. To do otherwise is what I see as political gaming. Please, let's follow the process and move on from there. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Zach Roslin. Please go ahead.
Hello, council members. Thank you for your time. Unfortunately, I can't be in person, but I would like to urge you to take a step back and think. It seems clear that the charter, in the case that Councilmember Lee should have been appointed mayor on Monday, and yet we're still here. It seems clear that the charter, in the case that Councilmember Lee should have been appointed mayor on Monday, and yet we're still here. It's admirable to have the passion to stand up, to stand up for what you believe in. And they like to counsel for the opportunity to reshape policy during their upcoming term, but they cannot do so after the election has already happened and it looks like they're losing. So I urge the council members to do what the Charter indicates. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Alexander Melendez. Please go ahead.
Good evening, San Mateo City Council. My name is Alex Melendez. I will be brief. This is about a rifle transfer, transfer of power. There is a path to do the right thing. That is appointing Councilmember Amorans Lee as mayor right now. Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Newsom, I would implore you to take a moment and feel how you would how would you feel if you were in her shoes? How would you feel a few years down the line if this was the kind of process that you were inappropriately being kept from in a normal transfer of power? But I want to offer you both grace. It is not too late. I believe both of you have the opportunity here to take the correct course and do the right thing and appoint her tonight. Please follow the recommendation of your city attorney. Please follow your city charter. You have a regular legal process that is not being followed. This is the right opportunity. This is the right time to do the right thing and appoint Councilwoman Amorans Lee as mayor. Thank you. Tonight.
Thank you. Next speaker is Thomas Morgan. Please go ahead, Thomas.
Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. Building on Karen Harrell's comment earlier, I guess I have a question for city attorney and city manager about the standard procedure for people appointing themselves, because if I recall watching planning commissions and various commissions where the person being nominated wouldn't make the motion and wouldn't vote on it. So if that's the case, then it would appear that we don't have any nomination for mayor and that the continuance until after the appointment would be the only valid motion. And just closing, I support waiting until the fifth member is appointed and hope that we can appoint that person first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Ally Saperman. Please go ahead.
Hi, my name's Ally Saperman. Very happy for the virtual option. I've spent the day in ER because I'm sick, but heard what was going on and felt it was too important to not call in. What's going on in San Mateo is a disgrace. This is why cities are losing local control, because they are not following the law. And cities have lost local control for smaller issues than this. This is pretty egregious. Amorans has been an amazing council member, and you should be lucky if she still wants to serve the city of San Mateo after being so badly treated. This is not acceptable. Really hope to see better. And just, I thank her for her elegance tonight.
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Dr. Liz Leister. Are you with us now?
Yes, thank you.
Go ahead.
There's been comments about the democratic process. Councilmember Newsom started out by saying that when there are five people on the council, that will represent a democratic process. That's not correct. There'll be four elected members and one appointed. Councilmember Nash, your website says you empower women. So I really wonder what could possibly be your reason to hesitate to install Councilmember Lee tonight as mayor. I would love to hear the true reason so that the impasse could be broken for the sake of the people that you claim that you serve. The definition of gaslighting is psychological manipulation that sows doubt in the minds of others. There's been a lot of gaslighting sowing doubt. There's no doubt. It's a clear process. There's no doubt who will be the next mayor. So who will break this impasse this evening? Councilmember Newsom, will it be you or will it be Councilmember Nash?
Thank you very much. The next speaker is Marty Jordan.
Thank you for this opportunity to share my comments. I live in District One. I have been in San Mateo for 25 years, and I have to first of all say I'm very disappointed in the behavior of my new council member, Ms. Diaz-Nash. And I actually have nothing else to add to the comments that everyone has made for appointing Ms. Lee as mayor this evening. So I urge the council to do that, and thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you very much. The, I want to make a statement that we had called, asked everyone to raise their hands and then called the last speaker out. The next speaker to be called is the last speaker. I see several more hands raised after that. So again, I'm going to state that you can send in your written comments, and they will become part of the permanent official record and be appended to that. But at this time, we had announced that Antonio Lopez would be the last speaker. And so at this point in time, we are going to Antonio Lopez. Please go ahead and make your comments.
Good evening, San Mateo council members. I'm a city Miss Palo Alto, and I'm so livid right now looking at what's going on. You know, the entire county is watching you guys. They're watching the behavior and the weaponization of rules and norms. It is sickening not only because Amorans Lee is a dear friend. She's a badass. She's somebody who's going to get things done. When I look around this county, and I don't see I look around this county, and I don't see why there are more women running, when there are no more queer people running, when there are no more folks of color running, this is exactly why. Because when we get to positions of influence, of decision making, there's always, there's always impediments in place to stop us. And I am just letting the board or the council know right now that we are 150% behind our dear friend, Amarin's Lee. She is uniquely qualified. She's going to make sure that San Mateo is going to be represented in its fullest fervor and fervor, and I am so excited for her leadership. Y'all, this is January 6 in San Mateo. This is embarrassing. I got to tell my neighborhood about the shenanigans happening in the city that represents this county. Be better, y'all. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, for the record, those remaining on the Zoom call with your hands raised, feel free to submit public comment. We will take that and make it a part of the official record. I'm sorry, our rules do state that we call out the last speaker.
Does the council want to take a break prior to deliberating?
That was going to be my suggestion, yeah.
So 20 minutes after nine, that clock's slow. It's 9:13, so about seven minutes, please?
We are reconvening the meeting. Please take your places. We are ready to reconvene the meeting.
All right, thank you, everyone. We're going to turn things back over to council.
Thank you. I would like to thank everybody who took the time to make public comment. Very, very much appreciate that. Mr. City Attorney, I've got a couple of questions for you just to clarify some things people have said either tonight or the other night, and just make sure that we're all clear. Okay? And if you're not the person, then please direct it out to the city manager, the city clerk. Was there any violation of the city charter by not selecting a mayor on Monday night and instead continuing the meeting until tonight? I believe there wasn't, but I'd just like you to reconfirm that.
No, that's correct. There was not a violation of the city charter. The city charter calls for the selection of the mayor and the deputy mayor at the first regular meeting in December. And while I had urged the council to make the decision on Monday, it could and did adjourn the regular meeting to tonight. So this is still the first regular meeting in December, even though it's continued, so it's not a violation of the charter. I think that answers your question.
Thank you. Secondly, there was some discussion that the San Mateo rotational mayor and deputy mayor appointment protocol has always been followed in a certain way and not deviated from. It's my understanding, however, that when former Senator Jerry Hill and former Mayor Claire Mack were on the council, they bypassed one of their colleagues in the rotation for mayor. And can you please confirm that this is true? I think it's important to share if it is true, because Senator Hill is regarded as one of our most accomplished San Mateo mayors and San Mateo leaders, and he felt there was a good reason to make a change to the guideline or to go against the guidelines, just as being discussed now.
That's more of a factual question for the, either the city manager or the city clerk.
I can say that there was a change in, on December 7, 1992. He, Councilmember Paul Gummacher was nominated for deputy mayor. He wasn't passed over as mayor, but as deputy mayor. He then subsequently became deputy mayor in 1994, and then second time mayor in 1995. And it was a motion and nomination for him as deputy mayor. And then there was a motion and nomination for a second member, which was Jerry Hill for deputy mayor. And in a 3-2 vote, the council voted for Jerry Hill as deputy mayor.
Thank you. And maybe this is a question for the city manager. If we did have a disaster or an emergency in the next few days, is that going to affect our emergency response in any significant way if we do not have an acting mayor?
Part of my role as city manager is as the director of emergency services. So, you know, operations would still continue, and we would address the emergency operation as we would under any circumstance. Not having a mayor, in an emergency situation, the mayor serves primarily as the city's spokesperson, so it would be disruptive to not have a mayor from that perspective.
But someone could be a spokesperson, someone else could be.
Well, it would likely fall to me since there's no mayor.
And if we didn't have a mayor for a short time, would it have a significant impact on the way that the city functions day to day?
As evidenced by the past two days, we are able to operate without a mayor. I'm in charge of the day-to-day operation of the city. We are able to operate, but it is disruptive to not have a mayor, and it gets incrementally more disruptive daily.
And if we can't agree on a fifth council member on December 12, what is the process after that?
Do you mean if we, if the council cannot agree on December 12 and filling the vacancy, and you don't have a mayor?
Correct.
Well, the charter doesn't really address that situation. The charter has a, you know, two, a two-step process. First, the council is to take action within 30 days on filling the vacancy. And failing that, then the mayor is to fill the vacancy. So the charter doesn't address the situation. So that's part of the reason why it urged the council to make a decision quickly, and at this meeting, to fill the positions of mayor and deputy mayor. So that reduces the uncertainty that would otherwise exist.
If I could ask for just a quick technology pause. Apparently, there is something, the audio is not going out on Zoom. Aaron is checking on it. Everything on the panel looks correct. So we're just going to maybe need 30 seconds to see if we can correct whatever the audio is, so everyone on Zoom can hear.
You got it, Nick?
Okay, all the people texting me to say there's no sound, if you can let us know if there's sound now.
This is Aaron responding from another room at City Hall. I can hear you clearly over Zoom.
Thank you very much, Aaron. Okay, we're good to go.
Okay, thank you, everyone. So thank you, city manager and city attorney, for reassuring me that we're in compliance with the law and our city charter and all our actions to date, that protocol can change, and for giving just a little bit of history and context, because it's important that we make decisions based on the truth. I myself have a very simple principle that I would like to share with everyone here. I myself have a very simple principle that I would like to share with everyone here. And as I said, everyone is welcome to their opinion. Everyone is welcome to think about what they believe is right. I would fight for that for every day. But I am supporting the most robust democratic process possible in, in making sure that we have a full complement of council members appointing the mayor and deputy mayor. This is simply about allowing a fully represented council to choose its leaders. The city charter in no way precludes it, and that was repeatedly affirmed by our city attorney. We have never had a reorganization and a council vacancy at the same time. The mayor has always been selected by a full complement, a full set of council members. We all know we have many, many complicated decisions in front of us. So my hope is that we can start out on the right foot with council with the strongest process that will enable us to collectively deliver the best results for the people of San Mateo. To some of you who said that it was individually based, my position would be no different if it was council member Lorraine, council member Lee, council member Newsom, or myself. This is just about process and about bringing people together. And in fact, once we seat a full complement of council members, including the fifth council member, and I have great faith that we can do that on the 12th, then I look forward to proudly voting for council member Lee for mayor and then selecting the deputy mayor. So this is not about individuals. This is about process. This is about ensuring for me that we give equal voice to each one of the representatives. One of the speakers said, how would you feel if this was happening to you? Well, the question I have is how would the fifth council member feel really not being able to have a voice? I know we want to come together and I believe that we will, we will do so on the 12th. And I look forward to proudly electing council member Lee as mayor once we have done that. Thank you.
I have a question. When was the last time that the San Mateo operated without a mayor or a deputy mayor? I am not aware of a time where that has happened. I would have to do some research to be sure, but I am not aware of a time that that has ever happened. Prasanna, do you mind talking a little bit about the process for the charter and making amendments to the charter? And how it is approved by the voters through a democratic electorate process?
Sure. I mean, that really summarizes it. I mean, if charter is created by process of forth in the California constitution and it's amended in the same way, it can be initiated by, an amendment can be initiated by the council, it can come from the voters. But if it's an issue, if it's, the process is started by the council, it would go through a robust public process, your public hearings. And then ultimately, a charter amendment needs to be voted on, needs to be approved by a majority of the voters in order to be enacted.
I have a question for council member Nash. Because when we opened this process this evening, in your opening statement, you mentioned that those here on the dais have a few commonalities that were interested in filling the open council vacancy. That we don't wish to have undue influence in that process. And so I guess I wondered if you could please explain what you feel is an undue influence in that process?
I believe that, as I've stated before, that we, each one of us should have an equal vote to secure, to appoint the next member of the council. So the mayor having potentially more of an influence, potentially could be seen as undue influence.
By whom? By yourself?
I have stated, no, I have a very simple process and principle. I want to support the democratic process that we've talked about and having a full complement of council members. There are many people tonight who have mentioned it, but I think we just have to go back to the basics and say, each member of council should be allowed to vote on the selection of mayor and deputy mayor.
But we have a process now, which has been used by previous councils with few to no issues that I'm aware of in selecting fifth council members. As a result of vacancies in the past, these processes have included a mayor having a tiebreaker to use if necessary. That process comes from our guidelines in our charter, which have been approved by voters. That sounds like due influence to me as opposed to undue influence. Can you help me understand?
What I would say is, as I said before, we have never had a lack of mayor and a vacancy at the same time. So that is, that's what's unique about this situation. And what I'm proposing is that we get through the process so that the fifth council member is seated and that fifth council member has the opportunity to vote for mayor.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but the reason why we don't have a mayor is because you have voted to oppose my nomination. The order of business is to select a mayor. The sequencing of the selection is in the charter, which is voter approved. Prasanna, do you mind reminding us again about the timeline for filling the vacancy? And the last time that we amended the guidelines, the city council guidelines?
Sure. So the timeline for filling the vacancy is under the charter, as just mentioned the last meeting. Within 30 days after the vacancy occurs, in this case, the vacancy occurred on December 4th. When a die-in happens, somebody member die-in happens, a resignation became effective. 30 days from when the vacancy occurs, the city council is to fill that vacancy. But if the city council fails to fill that vacancy, then the mayor does so. That, that's the process under the charter. And as for the guidelines, I mean, the guidelines were amended fairly recently, but for a slight, for a different reason. They were amended in light of the fact that we had moved from out-large elections to district elections. So there were, there was a change to the guidelines in that regard. But otherwise, the guidelines for selecting mayor and deputy mayor remained largely the same.
Would it be accurate to say that the timeline for the selection of mayor and the timeline for filling the vacancy was approved by the former council? Blessed by the former council, established by the previous council?
Well, yes, and that the previous council approved the amend, that amendment, that somewhat unrelated to the amendment to the guidelines. And then they had that, the full guidelines before them. So in that sense, they had an opportunity to review the guidelines once again and approved it with that relatively minor amendment. It is related to the selection of mayor and deputy mayor, but not this particular issue that's for the council.
And wasn't there an open and public process, including a study session where staff presented a, an outreach strategy and an application process for filling the vacancy that also included a proposed timeline?
Yes. I mean, there was a study session on November 21st and the city clerk would have more information on that. But yes, there was most definitely a study session on the application process and the timeline.
Okay. So it seems to me that the charter has been clear on the directive for the council to select a mayor, which should have happened on Monday. Nothing has changed in terms of the mandate that we were given that was voter approved. The other thing that has not changed is the established timeline for filling the vacancy, which was approved and reviewed by the previous council. So it seems to me that the only thing that is out of order is that we are without a mayor and a deputy mayor.
I would agree, and I would just want to comment that we recently had a vacancy filled in 2019 with a council that had four members. With the mayor with a tie-breaking vote to use if necessary. I, I don't see, I, I, I feel that as council member Lee just mentioned, our previous council set up the timeline to fill the vacancy, understanding that this new council would come in, select a mayor and deputy mayor, and continue on with the city business of fulfilling the duty of appointing a fifth member. There were not great calls for changing the process at that time. Is that correct?
I believe that's correct. There's no discussion of changing the guidelines other than, you know, what had been proposed by staff. That's your question?
Thank you. Yeah, I, I am, I am concerned that our elected representatives set up a sequence and we are not following that sequence. I don't understand why we're not following that sequence right now. And I haven't heard a good reason for changing the sequence. So I'm here to do a job. It's the first item, a ceremonial item. This is not a difficult decision. This should not be one that requires multiple hours of public comment. 100 plus people on Zoom right now. Nearly 100 comments tonight and in previous nights. I really wish we had this amount of energy put toward the more important parts of city business than the very first procedural item before this council. That said, I appreciate those who have come out tonight in, in defense of us moving forward with that business. I'm here to nominate a mayor and a deputy mayor tonight. And I'm willing to wait to get to the next nomination if necessary.
Couple things. Number one, the council that voted on the procedures was the prior council. We are a new council. So we can decide if we want to change the procedure. It's not in the charter. And then number two, I think, going back to the principle of trying to bring the fifth person on, we've all said that this is a divided community. We don't want it to be, but it is right now. And so we have to go above and beyond to include people. And that means including that fifth person when we make the decision. This is about building a process that everyone can stand on, that then will enable us to do the, the difficult work that we have to do. It's not about individuals. It's about getting a full complement of council members together to make that decision. And it's not an easy decision.
We do not require a full complement of council members to make this easy procedural decision, council member Nash. I disagree. I believe you're just stalling.
Well, then I would guess we just have to say we agree to disagree.
What strikes me as very odd and incongruent is it sounded like tonight, council member Nash, you said that you would support my nomination for mayor. And I also heard the same from you. And at the same time, you're saying that we need to have a full council to consider who should become mayor. So in our deliberations, if I can assume or presume to count on council member Lorraine, council member Nash, and council member Newsom's vote, even if there was one opposing vote for my nomination, I would still have a majority to ascend to the mayor.
But it comes back to the simple principle of we need to have that fifth person on. That, that fifth person could be supportive as well, where they may have different ideas, but we need to have a full council.
Mr. City Attorney, do we not have a quorum at this moment?
Yes.
Okay. When we have a quorum, are we able to conduct legislative business?
You're able to conduct any business within the purview of the council, yes.
I see. I would also like to ask our historian, our lovely clerk, Patrice, are you aware of any situation in the history of San Mateo where the mayor was disempowered or their, their tie-breaking vote was held hostage by, by other council members?
I will say I have not done research into that question. However, I am not aware of any situation like that.
Have you ever heard of any scenario where the powers of the mayor were discussed at length and obstructed the council from selecting a mayor?
I am not aware, again, without doing research in that particular question, but I am not aware of any situation like that.
And remind me again, how long have you served us on, as city clerk?
11 years.
Councilmember Newsom, can you, you, you informed us that you're interested in supporting Amherst Lee for mayor. Can you please just elaborate on why we can't do that tonight?
Never in the history of the city have we had only four people on the council to appoint the mayor and the, the deputy mayor. I believe that we should fill that seat, and then we can appoint mayor and deputy mayor. It's really that simple. It's never happened before. We need to, we're in uncharted territory.
But you're aware that our previous council was aware of that situation, right? And they didn't see an issue with going ahead with the sequence of first determining the mayor and deputy mayor with four council members, and then proceeding to the business of filling the vacancy.
I am aware that they didn't, they didn't act. I wish that they had, because we wouldn't be in this circumstance. I mean, that's really the truth. And there's only one person on this that was on the council before last Monday. So I wish that that discussion had happened, but I'm, like you, we're, we're all new here. So we have to deal, deal with the hand we've been dealt.
I'm here and willing to deal with it as soon as anyone else is interested in dealing with it. How can you justify coming to this different conclusion when a full council elected by the people came to a different conclusion and used council guidelines and a council charter approved by voters to ensure that we would in turn continue to make that same decision?
I think we're getting to the point where we're agreeing to disagree.
I was asking Councilmember Newsom the question.
I understand.
Thanks for your understanding.
I, I don't have a good answer. I, I think, like I've said, and I feel like we just keep coming around and around and around to the same question. You know, my, my stance is, is that we should be filling the seat before we appoint a mayor and a deputy mayor. It's never happened otherwise, and I don't think we should break that tradition.
Why?
Because it gives undue influence to whoever. So let's take amarance out of the equation. If you were nominated and became the mayor, if we come into a two-two deadlock, it gives you two votes instead of four. That's not democratic. That's not fair.
Why do you feel this is undemocratic and not fair if it's in fact in our guidelines that were approved by a democratic process?
Because it's never been done bef, it's never happened before. I mean, it, quite clearly, there's people that are going to be unrepresented. There's supporters out there who are going to be unrepresented. There's voters and citizens who are going to be unrepresented if we, if we let one person have two votes. That's not the intent of the way this has been laid out.
I disagree. It is clearly the intent. It's clearly the intent. We, the policy has it written out. I, 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 I'm disappointed. It couldn't be clearer.
City Attorney, do you mind reading out exactly how tiebreaker works in our charter?
So it's been repeatedly referred to as, as a tiebreaker. I would characterize it a little differently. For filling a vacancy, again, did you want me to read the actual language or just describe it, the actual language? Okay. Okay, here goes. So the charter says, "A vacancy on the city council from whatever cause arising shall be filled by appointment by the council, provided that if the council fails to agree or for any other reason does not fill such vacancy within 30 days after the same occurs, then such vacancy shall be filled by the mayor." And it goes on from there. I don't think you wanted me to continue, though.
No, no, I don't. Thank you.
On this point.
Yes, and, and if, if you don't mind for our benefit in layman's terms.
Well, again, the council has 30 days after the vacancy occurs to decide who should fill a vacancy. If the council can't decide, then that vacancy is filled by the mayor. That's presuming there is a mayor.
And remind me again about the democratic process that, that is involved in charter amendments and and approving the charter.
Well, the charter and amendments to the charter are approved by a majority vote of the people, the voters.
So I, I, I actually think this brings me back to Councilmember Newsom. I'm curious, what exactly do you believe to be undemocratic about the democratically voter-approved charter?
I believe there's a hole in the charter, though there's, there's, there's no documentation as to what to do in this scenario. We've never been in this scenario before. And it isn't right that any one person has a majority vote or a majority say in the outcome.
So I hear you disagreeing with the charter. Do you, um, do you still contend that it is illegitimate and undemocratic?
I never said that the charter was undemocratic. I said the situation we're in seems unfair and unreasonable. I think what's a reasonable expectation is we wait five more days, we sit someone in this remaining seat, and then we appoint a mayor and a deputy mayor. I don't think there's anything unreasonable about that.
Let me rephrase. What I heard you say was that the powers of the mayor you believe to be undemocratic because they have, quote, undue, undue influence. So,
Well, to be clear, there, there is no mayor right now. So until we actually fill the panel, the, the council, we don't have a mayor.
So my, again, my question is, the mayor has certain powers, right?
Yes.
Which, in your words, grant undue influence.
Talking about very specific scenario, which has never happened before in history of the city of San Mateo in 128 years.
Filling a vacancy has, has definitely happened.
Not with an unseated councilperson.
That's why we're here tonight, right, is to do the business of selecting a mayor again.
Right. But we've never done that without four, with a full council regiment.
Do you believe that we have an obligation to conduct city business without the full council when we have a quorum?
I believe that the city is not going to fall apart waiting until next Monday to choose a fifth seat and then put a mayor and vice, and vice mayor in place.
So back to my question, the powers of the mayor to effectively be tiebreaker, you consider to be an undue influence?
No, I don't agree with that comment.
Do you mind restating your opinion so I can better understand?
I think we just are talking in circles here. I don't believe that we can appoint a mayor and a deputy mayor without a full council. That's my opinion. That's my stance.
But did you not just say that you would support me as mayor?
I said that after we seated a fifth person on the council, that I would support you as mayor.
So what I hear is a condition. Right. Which brings me to an interesting point. In the last 24 hours, I have received two different backdoor transactional proposals that if I select a certain candidate that I can ascend to mayor. The fact that we have not selected a mayor, that we are not prepared to conduct city business is, is having a very egregious and toxic influence in the selection of the fifth council.
Well, then the way we have to solve this is get that fifth person on and then do the process. I don't know what you've received. I don't know what interactions you've had. But I know that what we have to do is have all five council members there and make the selection. This is not about individuals. The city is continuing. God forbid there was a disaster. We could get through that too. So we are talking about waiting until Monday night, and I have full faith that we can come to a consensus about the, the candidate and appoint them, and then as quickly thereafter, select the mayor and deputy mayor.
It's very clear to me that this council, this legislative body in San Mateo is quickly losing credibility, credibility that I've worked for three years to build with my former council.
I would respectfully disagree with you. I believe that a lot of people are very engaged. A lot of people are here tonight. Some are supportive of one position versus another, but this is a working body, and I respectfully disagree that, that the majority of San Mateans don't have respect for it. But I think what we have to focus on is getting through, and, and how do we get from here to Monday night? We can talk for hours, but what, what are the things that I've heard people are concerned about? They're concerned that there isn't a mayor, there isn't someone to work with the city in case there's an issue, or to be a spokesperson. This is a city manager form of government. The city manager is dealing with the day-to-day. So perhaps we, as a, an interim solution for the next five days, say that you would have the, the duties of the mayor to be the spokesperson. And then on Monday night, we appoint the mayor, excuse me, we appoint the fifth council member, and then we select a, we select a real mayor and a deputy mayor.
Can I just interject for a moment? When, when you refer Councilmember Nash to, uh, Councilmember Lee having the duties of mayor.
No, being a spokesperson.
As a spokesperson.
Being a spokesperson. There was a question that there was a, it was not as effective if we didn't have a spokesperson. So we could, we could agree that one of us should be a spokesperson.
Well, what's on the agenda tonight is to determine who will be the, the mayor or deputy mayor. I, you know, you could informally conclude that one person will be a media contact for the next five days. That's, that's not the same thing.
No, it's not. I'm not suggesting that we do the mayor. I'm trying to say, what can we do for the next five days that will enable us to, there was a concern raised that there wasn't a spokesperson. So could we appoint a spokesperson for the next five days?
I have a great suggestion. We could select the mayor and the deputy mayor, and then we would have a spokesperson to get us through. That is, in fact, why we're here right now.
Well, we will just respectfully agree to disagree. I, I believe strongly that we need to have that fifth council member. And you believe strongly that we should elect the mayor and the vice mayor, or the, excuse me, the deputy mayor tonight. And I think that's pretty clear.
Councilmember Newsom. I, I appreciate Councilmember Lee's question to the city attorney about clarifying a bit the mayor's role in the guidelines as it relates to filling vacancies. That is not exactly a tiebreaker vote, but rather there's a provision that allows for the mayor to select someone to the council if there's like a two-two deadlock, and after the, the timing of 30 days after the vacancy has elapsed, a decision can be made so that city business can continue. So the difference there to me, which I think is helpful, is that effectively the process we're preparing to undergo on Monday together will be, could be the same, whether we have a mayor or not, in that we have four council members trying to find consensus for a fifth pick. Does, does that sound right to you?
That's right. However, we would be back in the same situation of if we came to a two-two deadlock, the person who'd been the mayor for three days would now be the deciding person, giving them influence, which I don't believe was the anticipation or the intent of the way this was written.
So we have, currently there are nine individuals who have applied for that fifth position. And according to this sheet, they're all qualified. So I think we should give them their due, listen to what they have to say, make a decision on Monday, and then say, okay, help us select the mayor and deputy mayor.
May I chime in briefly and just remind the council that, again, under the charter, the council has 30 days to fill the vacancy. So if, for example, the council cannot reach a decision on the 12th, it still has some weeks to be able to make that decision, has until January 3rd. January 3rd is, would be 30 days after the decision, after the vacancy occurring, which is also the next regular meeting of the city council. So I just wanted to emphasize there's, there's no immediacy for the mayor having the power to appoint if the council cannot reach a decision on the 12th.
I appreciate that too, because that means after Monday, if we're unable to pick a fifth member together, we could try again. I, I guess, you know, with that in mind, Councilmember Newsom, don't you feel that that provides enough opportunity for us to make a decision together, whether we have a mayor or not? And if not, why not?
Let me just sit over here and think about it. Cause I don't have a prep, nothing comes to mind and I don't want to.
Okay. I'll just be over here. Councilmember Nash, you just brought up the list of applicants for the vacancy. After viewing this list, do you still have the same optimism you had on Monday night?
Absolutely. Absolutely. I think there's a broad range of people. And not knowing how everyone feels, there will be probably some that you support, some you don't, some that I support, some that I don't. But there's a broad enough diversity that I think we will be able to will come together. And, and if we're having difficulties, then the fact that we don't have a tiebreaker might make us even more able to come to consensus. So I'm hoping we don't need to, that we will be able to come together easily. But if we don't, we'll have to work hard and we'll have to come up with that fifth person. And I'm actually quite pleased that we got so many people to apply for the position.
I still don't feel like I've really heard a useful explanation for why we're stalling on this first item. Because it seems as in our conversations, there's acknowledgement that there's optimism in our ability to find a candidate for the vacancy. That you support ammirance Lee as mayor. That, you know, it's been established that the process we're going to undergo together on Monday won't immediately be under this so-called undue influence of the mayor's ability to select a candidate if we can't reach a decision in 30 days by, by January 3rd. With all that, what, what is the justification for us standing here talking right now? Why can't we select a mayor and deputy mayor and continue on with this business?
Because if we don't have equal representation to select that fifth person, then, then it's, it's not equal representation. And the tiebreaker, the lack of a tiebreaker will force compromise. I'm not saying that, that it's all going to be a super easy process. We may have lots of disagreements about who the fifth person should be. But that's why we have to sit and talk it through. It's, it's very real. It's not theoretical at that point. There are nine individuals who have applied and we have to agree on selecting one. And then that one will have an equal vote in selecting the mayor. Now, you know, I don't know what that one, who that one is, and I don't know what their opinions will be.
So what if on Monday, we do not find a candidate that is agreeable by three or more people? Does that change your mind?
No, because we will come back and try again. We will get there.
And what if we don't?
Then we will keep trying. I don't want to ruin anybody's holiday season, but we will keep trying. And eventually we will compromise.
And what if we don't?
Councilmember Lorraine, I have said what I have to say.
I would offer that we'll find ourselves in even more unprecedented territory. We will, we could potentially find ourselves in a deadlock for the fifth council member. We may not be able to get back to the decision for a mayor and deputy mayor. And then in January 3rd, we have four council members, no mayor, no deputy mayor and no fifth council member. What then will we do?
I don't believe we're going to get there. I believe that we will figure it out. You talk about trust. I trust that we will make that decision. And we have a great variety of candidates and we can choose from them. They're all very qualified individuals. And one of them will emerge.
If we can't even make the first decision of business, what makes, what is, what makes you think we're going to be able to do this?
Appointing a fifth council member is not appointing the mayor. So that's the first thing. And then we have that fifth person on and then we select the mayor and the deputy mayor.
I do not share your optimism, Councilmember Nash.
I hear that.
I feel almost the opposite. Nothing we have experienced on Monday night or tonight fills me with optimism that we're going to suddenly come to consensus. This concerns me. And it should concern others. In fact, it does. We've heard from a number of people. This is wrong. You're wasting our time.
I have a question for Prisana. Are there conditions where the council has such a prolonged state of dysfunction that it could expose the city to liability?
No, I don't foresee that. I mean, you still have a quorum of the city council. You still have the ability to make decisions. Certainly decisions that come before the council has to, have to be guided by the law, whatever that decision is. So the council still has the ability to, you know, make decisions in accordance with the law. So I don't foresee simply having a four-member council in and of itself exposing the city to liability. And that's, but that, that said, like having a fifth person can and will help to actually make decisions on particularly controversial issues.
And, and just, you know, from the city manager operationally, how, you know, where does this road lead us if in the scenario, in the worst case scenario, we are deadlocked for the appointment process without a mayor? How does that impact our ability to conduct city business that, that may require a sense of urgency where we are deadlocked?
Yeah, certainly. You know, I mentioned earlier, we are able to operate this lack of a mayor becomes incrementally more disruptive daily as we move towards January 3rd, where we have substantive business to do. If we are unable to, if we were in a situation where we have two-two and certain items of business, you know, fail, we could have a problem. Some things, you know, I'm already looking at the potential for needing to push out because they're not time sensitive, because I want them to be heard by the full council. But we do have items like our housing element that are time sensitive, that I am very concerned if, if this, if this prolongs into the new year.
We're talking about Monday, right? And that's a hypothetical in the new year. You're right. But I, I have faith that we'll be able to get it done on Monday. So let's, let's give it a try.
Prisana, yeah, I think you probably heard from Councilmember Nash and Newsom, their concern about the powers of the mayor and, and making an appointment. And I just, you know, I wanted you to help us, help remind us, what would a process look like for council to consider an amendment to, to the charter to assuage their concerns? What would, what would that look like in the standard order of business?
Well, I mean, the, a charter amendment is a, is a significant undertaking. I think it would require first a study session in front of the council. Some cities have, you know, charter review commissions where it goes, it depends on the scope of the amendment, but I think at a minimum it would require one or more study sessions. I think robust public input and outreach and public hearings. And then followed by ballot measure, which could be submitted by the council to the voters, then subject to a majority vote of the people in order to be enacted.
And remind me again, has the council, and it may be, you know, City Clerk, you can chime in here. Are you familiar with any previous concerns raised in prior meetings that you're aware of? Where the power of the mayor was raised as in question in terms of the role of filling vacancy? Have you, have you heard of any other concern raised by the public?
Actually, I've been here 12 years and in my 12 years, I can't, I can speak from that experience of sitting in this seat that I am not aware of something like that. Again, I would have to go research our historical records to see if that had ever been an issue, if I'm able to find that.
Right. Councilmember Newsom, remind me again, you said you'd been attending council meetings for a really long time. How many years was that?
30.
30 years. In your 30 years, do you recall ever raising this concern?
My 30 years, I don't ever recall there not being five council people when it came time to appoint a mayor and a deputy mayor.
So is that a no? You've never raised the concern of the powers of the mayor and upset forth in the charter?
Right, because we've never been in this situation in the history of the 128 years of the city.
Were you aware of the sequencing in timeline when you were running that it was very likely that former deputy mayor Pappan would ascend to the assembly?
I theorized that she would, but I also thought that her seat would have been filled before we were actually sworn into office.
But you've been attending for 30 years and presumably like pretty recently. So you are also aware of the concern. You are aware of your potential concern that this would, did you, I don't, did you speak up in public comment at any point about that concern?
No, I did not.
Okay. But it was really important concern for you?
It absolutely is.
And can I ask why this very important concern was never raised to the council? I don't remember seeing any emails from you.
Yep. I guess I was pretty busy running for office and I probably should have put more emphasis into something that was going on.
Councilmember Nash, you've expressed a similar concern with the timeline. And I know for a fact that you've been attending meetings very regularly because you often provide public comment. But I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't recall a time where you expressed concern about the mayoral powers in selecting a vacancy.
I made public comment on things that I had knowledge of and was, had done research on. I did not know as much about what happens in a situation when there is a mayor, there isn't a mayor, there isn't a fifth person and there isn't a deputy mayor. So I'm aware of that now, but I was not aware before.
But you are aware of the agenda item tonight, right?
The agenda, yes.
So the agenda item tonight, as was the agenda item on the fifth, is to select a mayor and a deputy mayor, correct?
Yes.
Set forth by the charter, voter approved. Correct?
I would really appreciate if you wouldn't cross-examine me. What I am trying to say is that the agenda item is the mayor and deputy mayor. But the guidelines, the protocol are not part of the charter. It's a different thing and they can be changed. And I think in this situation, as I think Councilmember Newsom was suggesting, we have a unique situation, so we need to deal with it accordingly.
So you, and I don't mean to interrogate you at all. I just want to understand your thinking. It's important in deliberation process. And so I'm, I'm asking questions because I legitimately am trying to understand.
Appreciate that.
So again, just to kind of outline the timeline here. You know, I remember you also ran for an appointment seat, right?
I ran for, I'm sorry.
Or you applied for an appointment seats?
Yes, I did.
Okay. So you're familiar with the appointment process. Right. At any point, did you raise concern about that deputy mayor or mayor having undue influence in that decision?
There was a full council at that point.
It was not.
There was a, there was a mayor who had been elected by a full council. You're correct.
It was a four-person council.
But Duncan Pappan had been elected.
She had been elected as a city council member and then through rotational vote by the council was nominated and voted in as mayor, correct? So at the time she had the same mayoral powers that are outlined in the voter-approved charter. At that point, when she was mayor and you are running for the, or you are applying for the appointment, did you express any concerns about her holding that power?
I probably wasn't aware of the fact that she was the, the tiebreaker. I was certainly aware of it when she made her final decision.
I remember council member, or at the time mayor, Pappan was heralded as, as not using her tiebreaker vote, as flipping her vote actually to select me. And, and confirming the will of the people. But at the time she did hold that power. And at the time, it doesn't sound like you had any concern. In the past three years, remind me, did you have any concern about the mayoral power that you raised to council? Because I don't recall seeing you write in about that or speaking about it in public comment.
No, because the the issue with the mayoral power is that we're talking about right now is the tiebreaker. And we weren't dealing with that. We were dealing with other issues.
And and you are aware again of the timeline for that was established by the previous council in in selecting the mayor. Oh, sorry, established by the charter in doing the the business of selecting a mayor on the fifth. That's unchanged in the charter voter approved. And you're also following, I presume, the city council meetings and our review deliberation and approval of the timeline and process for filling the vacancy. I remember actually you calling in quite a bit. And at the time, did you raise any concerns about the mayoral power in selecting someone to fill the vacancy?
I don't recall.
You don't recall. Is that a no?
It means I don't recall.
City Clerk, I you you follow public comment pretty, pretty closely. Do you recall either of our sitting council members raising this concern?
Not from memory, I do not recall.
So and where where I see us tonight, we in at no point in recent or known history in San Mateo has the city been without a mayor or a deputy mayor. We are in unchartered territory.
That is correct.
The voter approved charter is clear. And our first order of business is to elect a mayor and a deputy mayor. The second order of business, the second one, is to fill the vacancy. Your proposal to do this out of sequence is breaking protocol.
It is a unique situation and guidelines are guidelines.
Say that again, I'm sorry.
I said it is a unique situation and guidelines are guidelines.
There's nothing in the guidelines about the date of this decision. It is in the charter. The voter approved charter.
Yeah, and we are continuing the meeting from Monday till now. We have the opportunity to continue the meeting till next Monday. And that would still be within the charter.
The timeline for decision making was predetermined. Both of you have established that you've been closely following the agendas and attending city council meetings. You are presumably aware that these things happen through deliberation and were blessed by the voters and the previous council. The directives are very clear. The timeline is very clear.
There's been numerous occasions in history where things haven't been done in the timeframe that they're spelled out for. There's often been things that have been tabled and pushed out. All that we've been asking, and we keep seeming to coming back to this, is that we wanted to fill the seat so that we had a full council when we appointed mayor and the deputy mayor. We're not. There's no laws being broken. There's no. It's it's just simply reorging the steps, the timeline in which we do things.
And we've heard from two former mayors tonight. And we have the the president of Jerry Hill before that there is support for bringing in that fifth council member first. That it is, it is a way to slow things down, to be considerate. It's to deal with a situation we've never been in before. Both Jack Matthews and Claire Mack were of the opinion. And in his day, Jerry Hill made a similar choice. So I'm hearing that Councilmember Lee and Councilmember Lorraine have a certain opinion and Councilmember Newsom and I have a different opinion about where we go next. So I've stated my opinion. I think we've heard from a lot of people. And I would make a motion to continue this meeting until after we select the fifth council member on the 12th. I don't know whether it has to be the 13th because we can't. I don't know whether you'll have to help me with that. But that we continue the meeting until after we selected the fifth council member.
Well, you could continue, you could adjourn this already adjourned regular meeting of the council until after the special meeting on the 12th. But I think there's a practical consideration is we don't know how long the special meeting on the 12th is going to last. There may be a lot of discussion.
No, I'm saying maybe we do it the next day. We do.
We do have another practical issue is we have planning commission on the 13th and and they have a significant agenda item. So if if there were agreement, we would need to move it to the 14th.
And in the interim, if there is a need for a spokesperson, the city manager could fulfill that that duty or we could choose someone else. I believe we're going to make this work, so I want to give it a chance.
Councilmember Nash, were you making a motion? You started to make a motion then asked a question?
So make it. I would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting until, I guess it would be the 14th of December.
Seven PM in council chambers.
Yeah.
I would second that.
We have a motion in a second.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Lorraine?
No.
Motion fails two, two.
We are here to make a decision tonight. The charter is asking us to make a decision tonight.
The charter is asking us to make a decision at the first meeting. And we've, we start the first meeting on Monday. It's now Wednesday. It can move on to the 14th. And then we can have a fifth council member selected. And if we find ourselves in that situation, we we select that council member and then we we select the mayor and the deputy mayor. I think it's we've all stated our positions very clearly. And I would love to find a way forward, but I don't think until after we have that fifth council member that it's going to happen. As I've said, I, once we do that, I am all about the principle of having the five council members make the decision, make the vote. After that, I am all for supporting Councilmember Lee as mayor and and selecting the the deputy mayor by, I believe it's drawing straws. Is what was.
Well, it cannot be continued without either my vote or Councilmember Lee's vote.
Okay, well. Then we'll wait.
Does the city manager or city attorney have any suggestions on alternatives to what has been proposed tonight?
If we had a clear path forward, we would provide it.
I'm I'm so saddened by the impact I believe this is having on our community and our staff. I have I've worked really hard to uplift the organizational health of our city. And I see this having a chilling effect on morale. The city should not and cannot continue to operate in a deadlock without a mayor and a deputy mayor. We have been tasked with doing the business at hand, taking care of the first agenda item before this council. That's what we're here to do tonight, and that's what I'm committed to doing tonight.
I am committed to doing that as well. I have serious misgivings about this council's ability to conduct its business fairly, openly and legitimately, given what's transpired so far. How are we going to pick a fifth council member if we can't even do the first ceremonial item properly?
Because the first ceremonial item is dependent, for at least Councilmember Newsom and myself, on selecting a fifth council member. And let's get that done and then let's finish this up. This, as we've all said, it is a ceremonial role. It's the first thing that we're doing. Selecting the fifth council member is also an important thing. And between now and Monday, we're Wednesday. Let's get through it. Let's interview the people. Let's make a decision. And then on the 14th, that's the day we have to do it. Let's select the mayor and deputy mayor.
I just, I'm still struggling with the math here. I, you know, in doing city business, you got to count to at least three, right? So if I am nominated as mayor and you you will presumably vote for me, Councilmember Lorraine. Councilmember Nash, you said that you would vote for me. And it sounds like, unless I've offended, Councilmember Newsom, you also confirmed that you would vote for me. And yes, I will have my own vote as well. So that's four votes. Do you anticipate that the fifth council member will have an outsized vote in this decision? I I just, the math doesn't work for me, so I'm just trying to understand. How does? How does it change the math? It's not my strong suit, but like four, one is majority rule. So if I can count to four, then I think that I have the votes to become mayor, even if there's one vote in opposition. So I just, I don't quite understand what changes. Help me understand.
I am going to go back to say I've stated my position. I think we need to have all five council members. And then for all we know, it'll be a five zero vote. I don't know. But it's the principle of having everyone seated so that we can make that decision.
The principle of having everyone seated. So you don't presume, you don't believe or anticipate that your vote will change.
I can't talk about hypotheticals. I'm saying I believe that once we appoint that person that I will proudly support you as mayor. But I believe we need to have that fifth council member there to make the decision.
And we we do have a quorum to make this decision, right? Right? So on principle, you don't believe this decision should be made. You do believe in the legitimacy of our governing document, the voter approved charter. Is that right?
Yes, I do.
And the timeline set forth.
Yes.
Do you understand that the directive tonight and Monday was to select a mayor and a deputy mayor?
Yes, and you understand that I have a differing view than you do because I believe that we need to have that fifth council member there because we need to have all five there to make it happen. If we don't see eye to eye, I respect that. I respect your opinion. I respect your opinion. But I would ask you to respect mine as well.
I, it's hard for me to hear you say that you're standing on principle when it is blatantly apparent that this is all about disempowering the mayor from executing a tiebreaker vote for the fifth council seat. That is what you are actually talking about. And I just wish you would do us the service of being transparent and genuine in raising that concern.
We've talked about how the tiebreaker and the mayor will have will have undue influence. We've talked about that ever since the beginning. That's nothing that is disingenuous. It's how it's the idea to have five members make that decision. It's important. And we've also said that we haven't been in this position before. And, you know. But I guess I just come back to the fact that we've stated our positions and you've stated yours.
So this concern about the powers of the mayor, if you are agreeing that that is in fact the true concern. Again, they were not raised at any point that we can recall or you can recall in the many years that you in the many years that you were attending meetings and the three decades that you were attending meetings. The timeline has not changed. The process for making a charter amendment and changing the powers of the mayor, as our city attorney outlined, would involve council majority, a study session, and a vote by the electorate. That is how you change the rules. That is the established process for changing policy. We are here tonight to do one thing. Select a mayor and a deputy mayor. That is the business at hand. That is the directive of our voter-approved charter, the democratically voter-approved charter that has been in place for more than thirty years. Yes. How do you justify disempowering the mayor? Do you, you, you assume that, or it seems to be that you agree that it is my turn. And yet, this delay in actually confirming by vote my assumption to the mayor effectively is disempowering the mayor. How do you justify taking this action?
I feel like we've asked and answered these questions over and over and over again. My opinion hasn't changed. From the get-go, I feel as though we should have all five people seated before we appoint a mayor and a deputy mayor. That's my opinion. It isn't going to change, and that's it. There's nothing else I have to say about it.
This opinion is not founded in council guidelines. It contradicts council guidelines. This opinion is not founded by the voter-approved city charter. It conflicts with the city charter. We are here right now because of your unfounded opinions. And that's not right. It's wasting our time, it's wasting your time, it's wasting the people's time.
And I would, I would move that we should adjourn and continue on the fourteenth so that staff can go home, so that the audience can go home, so that we can get together on the twelfth and select the fifth person, and then on the fourteenth, select the mayor and the vice and the deputy mayor. I, I share your concern about not wanting to waste particularly staff's time because staff has been here. This is the second night.
Again, you know, we have one, one order of business. There's one thing on the agenda. It's very, it's actually a really light agenda. Usually we have really heavy agendas with lots of reading and very long packets. This is just one, one thing that we have to do, that we're all here to do tonight. You're aware that everyone is watching. Everyone is watching this moment. This is a defining moment for our city.
And I would hope that we could find an agreement to get to the twelfth and then elect the mayor and the vice mayor, the deputy mayor, excuse me. It's about making compromises on, on both ends. And I appreciate that you have very strongly held beliefs. I would hope you would appreciate that we did too, or I did.
Refusing our city mayoral representation is antithetical to the rules of order and decorum. We have a job to do tonight. We had a job to do on Monday night. I ask my fellow council members, please do your job.
That's what I'm doing right now. And I, I don't want contention, I don't want. But but if you believe that you need to have all five members of the council to vote on the mayor, that is different than, we haven't had this situation. I know we've said it a thousand times. I'll say it a thousand one times. It is a unique situation. We have a way to solve it. We get through it, and then on the fourteenth, or, you know, I'm, I'll hold the meeting outside in the hall on the twelfth. But I know that was not a good suggestion, but still. If you bring it down to reality, we have five days. In five days, we can select a council member, we can then elect the mayor and the deputy mayor, and be done, because I agree with you, there is a lot of important stuff to do.
Depriving the city of San Mateo of mayoral representation for any amount of time breaks precedent. It flies in the face. It is an affront to good governance. It impairs our city. It is going to stall and delay important city business and our legislative process. Our city staff is asking us to make this decision, including our city attorney, our city manager. And it is supported by the directives of the voter-approved city charter and the council-approved city guidelines. The councils are elected by the electorate to represent the will of the people in making decisions about policy that is set forth in the council guidelines. Everything about this process, the timeline, has been predetermined and blessed by the people. What you, Councilmember Nash, and Councilmember Newsom are doing is obstructing the city from doing standard city business. We have a job to do tonight. We had a job to do on Monday. I don't like turning in my homework late. And now we are late.
We also have the job to select the fifth council member so that we have a full council.
That job is going to happen on the twelfth. That is the second order of business. The first order of business set forth in our agenda is selecting a mayor and a deputy mayor. There is an order. There was a timeline established by governing documents blessed by the people and blessed by our electeds. At no point did either of you raise a concern about the powers of the mayor. At no point in the three decades and multiple city council meetings that Councilmember Nash attended, no recollection from our city clerk that this was a concern raised by any of the public until it's my turn. I have, I have stated multiple times my commitment to going through an open and public process, a fair process, with the intent of finding consensus in selecting a council member to join our team. I am committed to working all together to do that for the sake of the city, for the sake of our staff and our reputation. Again, I was approached multiple times through back-channel deals that have already tried to, as you say, put the thumb on the decision point for the fifth council member. I like this coun, I like this candidate. This candidate is a good fit if you really want to be mayor before, you know, before the twelfth. An egregious Brown Act violation. I refuse to do business that way. I want you to know, Councilmember Nash, although we had visibility to the applications as of 5:00 PM-ish today, I did not download it and review it because I don't think that that should factor in in this decision. The decision to do business today, selecting a mayor and a deputy mayor. That is what we are charged to do today, well, Monday.
I did not download the applications either. All I have is the list in front of me that our city clerk shared with all of us.
There is already a perversion of this process. A perversion of standard decorum. The city deserves a mayor and a deputy mayor. Please join me in doing the job at hand tonight.
Out of order. Please take a seat, sir. Public comment is done. Take a seat.
Well, I make a motion again that we adjourn the meeting until the fourteenth.
I'll second it.
Motion is second, Patrice.
Councilmember Diaz-Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Lorraine?
No.
Motion fails. Two-two.
I can suggest a break, though. It's been two hours.
Great.
I can suggest a break, though. It's been two hours.
All right, we're going to reconvene.
There are a number of people in the audience and on Zoom that are probably have, as someone said earlier, would prefer to go to sleep. And that my suggestion would be that we adjourn. I've made that suggestion before. I would make it again.
I'd second it.
So I heard a suggestion. Was that a motion?
Sure.
A motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
To what?
To the 14th of December at 7:00 PM in council chambers.
I'd second it.
We have a motion to second, Patrice.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
No.
Councilmember Lorraine?
No.
Motion fails 2-2.
I would just like to clarify that not all of us are keeping us here right now. Two members are keeping us here right now. You and Councilmember Newsom. Councilmember Lee and I are ready to do the city's business. That's why we're here tonight. And we're still ready to do it if you're ready to comply. Otherwise, I suppose we can wait for at least a while longer. And while we're waiting, perhaps I would like to ask Councilmember Newsom if he's thought a little bit about my question.
I don't even remember your question, sorry.
Well, I'm concerned because it seems that part of the reason why you're keeping us here right now is because you believe you have concerns with the mayor's ability to have, quote, undue influence on the selection of a fifth council member. But as we discussed, the process, it seems to me that the process, whether we have a mayor or not, involves four council members trying to come to consensus on a fifth council member, at least three votes to fill that vacancy, and that the mayor's influence wouldn't actually impact or have the potential to impact the decision until several opportunities for deliberation have taken place. So given this, you know, do you really feel that that is why we're here right now?
I feel as though the absence of a fifth council member puts us in a place where whoever is the mayor would have undue influence, correct?
But not until...
So what would be their motivation to compromise if they knew they could just wait it out? And I'm not saying anyone's the mayor, because I don't want to make it like this is a personal thing. Whoever's the mayor has no, no reason to compromise because we don't have a fifth council person. If we had five people in the council, it forces the hand to compromise.
I'm not sure I understand. If, if Amarin's Lee were the mayor and she did not want a certain candidate during Monday's process, but you liked a certain candidate and would support that candidate, and Ms. Nash supported that candidate, and I supported that candidate, then we would have our fifth council member, right?
That's one option, but likewise, we could be deadlocked 2-2.
Indeed, I think that is the most likely scenario on Monday.
Except that if we have a deadlock line of trying to put a mayor in place on the 14th, we have, we have pressure on ourselves to make sure that we end our Monday night meeting with a fifth council member. We're forcing compromise.
But what if we don't? How is that forcing compromise?
Because we all have equal say in who fills the fifth seat. I feel like I've said this time and time again. I don't, I don't really know how to say it over again. I mean, if we all have equal vote, then we're under pressure to come to a compromise. If we have a person who's in the mayor's seat, the mayor has no reason to compromise. If they don't want that person that two of us like, there's no reason to consider them. They can just stall us out, and then we're going to have whatever, whoever that person wants in place.
Councilmember Nash, Councilmember Lee mentioned in this meeting that she has been approached multiple times by people seeming to offer her something like the mayorship. I'm not sure how this can be offered, but in return for supporting a certain candidate for the process, we are to go on in Monday. Does that concern you?
Yes, it does, and I would hope that she's reported it. That's not the way it should happen.
It seems to me, though, that one way we might be able to remove the supposed power of this offer would be to select a mayor and deputy mayor tonight.
Well, I don't understand enough about the offers to understand how the person or people who made those offers thought they could affect the outcome of mayor. So I really can't comment, but I don't understand how that would work. And I haven't, no one has approached me. I'm just, I'm very surprised.
It troubles me.
Yeah, that troubles me too. That people, that's, that's as wrong as, as could be.
Delaying this process troubles me.
And it troubles me that we're talking about five days, and there is a way to get to a place where the mayor can be selected, the fifth council member's there, and we're done. I mean, there is that path. And obviously, I'm not persuading you to take it, but there is that path.
Doing business out of order in this case has already compromised the integrity of the process when I've been approached to barter the mayorship for your, presumably your and your preferred candidate.
I don't know who you're talking about. Did you report?
I'm reporting it today. It happened.
It's a heck of an allegation.
It is, and I-
And I haven't been involved in it. It doesn't sound like Lisa's been involved in it. So I hope that you've reported it and look forward to hearing what they say about it.
The process has clearly been tainted, and that is why we have a sequencing in place upheld by our charter, upheld by our guidelines, upheld by the timeline that was approved, and blessed by my, my former council colleagues, democratically elected. At no point in time, knowing the timeline, all transparently laid out in our meeting minutes and our YouTube channel, at no point in time was this concern raised. This is a bald-faced attempt to subvert the powers of the mayor. It's clear as day. And in so doing, you are depriving our city, our 105,000 residents of mayoral representation. You are breaching protocol and precedent. We are in very dangerous territory.
We can agree that we're in uncharted territory. But I see a path forward. I think the city is operating. There are processes, procedures, and people to handle them. And in five days, this will be done. And once again, my position is simple. We need to have five council members and a fully, a full complement of council members in order to make the decision. So let's go and choose that fifth council member and then select the mayor and the deputy mayor. And get on with it.
Councilmember Nash, are you just like checking your email while you're upholding our democratic process?
I was checking my availability next week if we were going to have a special meeting continuance. Yeah.
So just on the record, given how much public comment we heard tonight, in a third public comment period, I'd like to try one last, well, at least one more time tonight to see if we can end this right now and nominate Amarin's Lee for mayor.
Let's do our job. I second.
We have a motion to second, Patrice.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
No.
Councilmember Newsom?
No.
Motion fails 2-2.
I'm disappointed. I'm disappointed in myself, in my inability to change this decision. I'm disappointed in our council's inability to handle the first ceremonial item that's been put before it. It is, it is embarrassing. I find it embarrassing. It's shameful. It's extremely disrespectful to Amarin's Lee, who's put in a number of years on our council, who has experience, is the only choice for mayor. This decision could not be clearer or easier. And so the fact that we've spent a number of hours debating it and stalling this decision gives me grave concern. This is the easy decision. There should be no reason why we're here right now. The, the only possible reasons I have, I am concluding from this proceeding are that we're essentially being hijacked right now. That, that two council members are unwilling to allow Amarin's Lee to become the mayor.
That is absolutely incorrect, Councilmember Lorraine. What we want to do is first seat the fifth council member and then vote. And both Councilmember Newsom and I have said that we believe Councilmember Lee is qualified, and we would proudly support her, but that we feel it's important to seat that fifth council member.
That's just something you made up. That, that doesn't come from city council guidelines. That doesn't come from the city charter. That doesn't come from the recommendations of the city attorney or the city manager. If this were a land use decision or another decision of import to the people of the city of San Mateo, the, the notion that you would wish to deviate from the recommendations of staff and the people who elected the previous council who set forth these guidelines would be absurd and problematic. I, I don't see why it's okay here in this ceremonial item. And in fact, this concerns me even more because if we can't even get this done, we're going to have a hard road ahead. We have a lot of very important decisions. And if we can't get this right, we're in a lot of trouble.
And I think we can get this right. And we want to get it right, and we will get it right. But to have a full, solid process, we need to have all five council members. to have a full, solid process, we need to have all five council members. It's going to be Monday, and that's fact, that we are going to review it on Monday. So I would say let us lock ourselves in the room on Monday and make it happen, and then on the 14th, we can have the decision about the mayor and the vice mayor and, and go, go have a, a break.
It's simply not true that we need five council members to make this decision. We can make the decision tonight. We can make it right now. I don't... I, I find, I find it very concerning, Councilmember Nash, that in our discussion on Monday, you didn't sound interested in pursuing a charter amendment related to fixing or changing the mayor's ability to pick a, a, a fifth council member in the event of a vacancy and a deadlock, but that what's happening in the next two weeks concerns you. I, I don't, I don't, I think that's very problematic.
My intent was to say, oh, we had, the most important thing right now is to get through the next two weeks and make these decisions. That does not preclude going back and discussing things in future, but right now, we have a unique situation where we've never been before, and I would love to get it resolved as quickly as possible.
Clearly, you would not.
Well, I'm within my guidelines, and my guideline is that we need to have all five members seated. So that's on Monday.
I'm interested in following the council guidelines as opposed to the Nash guidelines. That's why I'm still here. Councilmember Newsom, I'm similarly concerned that though you mentioned you're interested in supporting Amarin's Lee for mayor with five council members on the dais, that you're not interested in supporting Councilmember Lee with four members on the dais.
I've already been asked and answered this. It's the same and hasn't changed.
I'm just clarifying, for those who are still with us, that there is no, in fact, no justification for us still being here. And we're, we're, you know, two council members are literally waiting until Monday to do the first item of business. It's troubling. It's problematic. But now that we've hashed that out a million times, I guess I'll just wait for the next opportunity to do the city's business.
We, we just hit midnight. I, I think for the, for the sake of everyone, you just sitting up here and waiting, waiting one another out is not the best use of anyone's time. So either we need to continue to deliberate, or we need to adjourn, adjourn until another time, whether that's Monday or whether that's a different time. It's clear there's an impasse. You know, you know, I, I waited till 2:30 to say it on Monday, but I don't, I don't think staying here is gonna get us anywhere. So, you know, again, if, if there's, if there's stuff to be said, let's, let's say it and keep moving, but I, I think sitting up there and, and not doing anything is, is not, not good for anyone.
Not a good luck, sitting up here and not doing our job. It's definitely not a good luck. I agree. I, I will make a motion to adjourn to, what are we saying, to the, this item to be revisited.
If I, if I could, Councilmember Lee, if, if you're suggesting adjournment and then continuation until next week, I, I think there's, there are multiple options. One, one option would be to agendize this for after the special meeting on the 12th.
Great. If we can get the room.
I'm sorry.
When, we can get the chambers? Yeah?
Yeah, we, we would just stay here after the appointment to do the, the continuation of this meeting.
That works for me.
Just to clarify the motion, so it is to adjourn this already adjourned regular meeting until Monday 12th, following the conclusion of the special meeting? Correct?
Yes. Thank you for clarifying. So moved.
I second it.
With a motion to second, Patrice.
Councilmember Lee?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Newsom?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.